I'd like to call this meeting of the planning board, the village of Old Spring, to order. We've got a lot on the agenda today, so thank everyone for their patience in advance as we work our way through. And I actually have another item to add. So I'd like to add like to request a vote to add the approval of Forty Main Street gym resolution from last time to report business at the end.
I get a second?
Second adding the resolution for Forty Main to the agenda.
And do you have an item that you wanted to add?
Yes, please. Thanks. I'd just like to add, I think it's gonna be adding to our playbook of items and it's
Yeah, which I can think about.
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to add an agenda item that involves we're doing a playbook and adding an item that we just learned from one of our recent approvals.
Okay. A second. All in favor?
Hi.
All right. We'll do that in board business after everyone else's sleep. We don't have any minutes pending right now.
We have a few that are not for today.
Not for today? Okay. Do we have any, I don't believe we have any reports from members?
Nope.
We do have one correspondence from the zoning board for Tenny's Velvet Ear. It's actually here. Folks can look at it, pass it around with our copy right now, but I'll describe it broadly to everyone. Yeah, okay, good. So basically, it is a request for a a fence in the rear of the property, but it's, I think, two feet higher than allowed. This is Tenny's Velvet Ear. They're requesting a variance from and, you know, for me, I haven't, I don't see anything in there that really merits our comment. But I'm open to other folks' comments if they feel the same.
I wouldn't totally get it. I'd be in favor of giving them variance.
Yeah.
So I'm not sure, is it for the planning board to give a variance or
No, no.
to have an opinion?
It is, it is to us, to Dane to comment.
To Dane to comment?
Yes.
Right. The reason why I couldn't make Peter open, so 13417, a fence wall up to six feet in height permitted on front or side yard, side yard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Obviously, there's a trailer.
Yeah, so we want so it must be their, a budding neighbor.
Again, we're just, we're just making any comments if we have any issues with it. We're not, we're not approving it if something that we could, that we're just
We're, we are, we are giving the planning board's perspective on the application.
Okay.
And we can say whatever we want. We could say, you should approve it, you should not approve it. We think it's a good idea, but you shouldn't approve it. We can do all sorts of stuff, but that's, that's the extent of our purview and the zoning board can do whatever they want with that information.
Yeah. I'm fine with that. That's the house. It's like at the end of the street.
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have any problem.
Then I'd like to make a motion that the board approved the chair to send a note of no comments to chair of the zoning board.
I'll second that.
With respect to ten and twelve.
I will second that.
Okay. All things, bye. I will do that immediately after this, if Eric is waiting. All right, we have no old business today. It's all new business. So we'll start off with the newest of the new business, which is Forty Main Street office space use parking requirements. Hey there.
How are you?
Welcome. Would you mind coming up introducing yourself and just help the board understand what you're asking for and we'll see what we can do from there?
Yeah, sure. I'm Serena Strauss. We're the owners of the building at Forty Main, and this pertains to the office space in the back.
Yeah.
Under the new zoning, the parking requirements have been significantly decreased, so we're applying to you to have that revised according to the new zoning. And what we're asking for is a waiver and that the waiver be considered satisfied because back in May of 2022, I think, we paid waivers for 17 spaces and under the new zoning, I think it's eight, only eight that is required.
Yeah. Okay. I think my read of this is that all, all you really need here is the board to approve an amendment to the previous judgment about the site plan. Just to figure out like, okay, we're, we're many of the site plan being to be conforming under the new code, given the requirements of the new code. So I don't actually think, yeah, so I don't, I don't actually think we need to do anything with the second, with the second part. The, the, not only do we not need to do anything, fortunately, at the planning board, we have no authority on waiving any particular arrangement you might have with, with the village board. But I don't think it'll matter because as soon as we approve this, you'll have a conforming site plan and we don't have to think about it ever again. So folks, I think, just take a second to review site plan here. We'll have some questions for you about, about what we're looking at. One of the things that I noticed between I think we have a few different notes about the square footage of the office space. We have like 2983. Do we have, like, do we have like a do we have like a total number of, of office space for footage for the building?
Yeah, it should be, I mean, it should be on there. I think the architect calculated the, the required number of parking spaces according to the square footage of the office space. So it should be on there. I don't have it in front of me, but there's like a grid that shows these parking spaces.
Yeah, yeah, definitely see the parking spaces. John, you, you had, you had seen a couple of different numbers, so we just want to make sure.
Right, so the application says 3800 square feet. The plans say 2983. And the previously approved site plan, it's hard to read on here. But it's a, I think it's 28 something.
Okay. And the only reason to get the consistent number is because that, we'll just use that to, to do the calculation, so.
Great. I believe 3800 is correct.
3800 is correct? So it sounds like the, the number that's used here to calculate this, this perfect by architect is 2983, so.
Do you mind if I
Yeah, yeah.
I just want to make sure it's not giving.
Or it's possible that it's, there's, maybe there's
Yeah, there's
they've broken it out by different parts of the office space. Is that possible?
I think that's possible because the office spaces is just this space in the back. The space in the front is all retail space.
Yeah.
So we're only talking about this back space.
Okay. So, but then that, if you see like on that, on, on top of that space, there's like that number that says 2983. You see that there? I think that's the one that we just need to figure out. Is it?
Yeah, I'd have to
or 38?
I'd have to go back and look at here. I also want to confirm if that was an error.
Okay.
Could be my error, could be hers.
Yeah, I think, I think it's important to get like resolved, but it's not, it's not a blocker. It's mainly just, it will help us understand exactly like given that square footage, what is the requirement and how, how are you going to need it? Okay, so it looks like to me, based on the proposal here, that you've got you've got eight spaces proposed, but I noticed that five of them are, are they within the structure, like the bottom, the bottom level of the adjacent structure? And do you have like a new parking agreement with that owner?
We are the owner.
Okay.
So, you know, again, what, what we're asking for is a waiver, but we were also asked to show that there's the availability of off-site parking.
Yeah.
If that's required. So that's what we're showing there. We own the lot and the building. And there's, there's way more than eight spaces there, but there
Gotcha, gotcha. So, so the, I think that the, the code does allow for for, for you to obtain your number of spaces from another property. In this case, it happens you want, you also own, which is handy. Hopefully, you'll grant that to yourself. In terms of, in terms of like, the, like accessibility of those spaces, that, that's, that bottom area, is that, is that just like a parking garage in the, in the bottom area or like, what's the stat, like the status of that area?
Yeah, parking garages, there's two, there's two bay, there's two entrances.
I see.
And then it goes back like far.
I see. And are, are those bays like open during the day for office use or office users or?
No, because we never
Okay. But in the case where you had an office worker that, that wanted to take advantage of that, they would have a key or how would that work?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Does other folks have thoughts or questions, clarifications they have?
Now, I can see what you were talking about where it has, it's listing for that different size. But you're asking for it to just go down to eight, right? And even if this, if this year, this, if the one that's under 3,000, the only requirement is six. So the higher numbers requirement eight.
The, the higher, the higher number that you're part of it is eight.
Okay, so she's, of course, even if it is higher than this number, that's also the question, right?
Yeah.
It doesn't mean that
Yeah.
I don't have a problem.
It must be for the retail space too, because that's got three required, six required. So it's nine divided one by 1.2 sharing factor, and that's where they come over there. It's that, that funky mapping grid thing that I saw in the code.
Oh, because for the
That's the other thing is the plans are calculating the need for spaces for the retail and office portion.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, so that's where she comes up with it.
Well, we, we actually waived we waived the parking requirement. Actually, we, sorry, we didn't waive. We reduced the parking requirement for the gym space to zero
Right.
last time.
But there's still the other retail space.
Yeah, yeah, understood, understood.
Yeah, the retail has a waiver, so And I'm sorry, I'm, I'm I'm not, the, the retail space got a waiver and that was separate from the office space. So if we did this wrong, we'll fix it. Maybe we'll need to account for that. You'll just let me know what we
So there's a, there's a waiver on file with the, with the village board.
Oh, we'll have to confirm it, but it sounds like
Okay, so, so we got, I think that means that we just, that we still in, in the spot we were in before, we just need to confirm what the square footage is of the office space and then figure out what the requirement, but it sounds like whether it's this number or the bigger number, it's eight, it's eight or fewer.
Right.
What is the use of the, of the other building that you want to borrow spaces from?
Right now, it's vacant.
It's vacant? Okay. So one of the, one of, I think, the, the kind of the quirks of when things come before the planning board as an, as an example, so do you know what the actually previous use was of that before it became vacant?
It was residential.
Residential, okay. So one of these will, will, we may need to condition the grant, the, the satisfying of, of the spaces based on the continued kind of in, like, non-use of that other building, only because we won't necessarily have the ability to evaluate the parking situation for that building if you resume residential use, for example. So it was some before, it's not really, it shouldn't be a big deal, it's just a, 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 a small caveat that might be important to add in to, to what's there. Any other thoughts or questions from, from folks?
Serena. So firstly, great. Secondly, all that I'd ask is that, you know, that these spaces remain open, they're not developed spaces and, you know, realize that that you may even be a little over capacity in parking here. But then the other piece is looking down the road, if you were to develop the other space and or exit one of the properties, that then we wouldn't, the planning board wouldn't be in a weird position where it's like there are assigned spaces across properties and where the village is in like a position where we're, where we're coming up light on, on, on parking spaces because an investor's decided to to reappropriate their property, they like to invest themselves. So, so that's, I, I just want to make sure we don't end up in that position, that's all.
Well, so just so I understand, who makes the determination if there's a waiver as opposed to requiring basis?
So the village board can grant waivers.
Okay.
We can, you can request that we refer this to the village board to request a waiver and we will attach our recommendation along with that, whatever that happens to be. For what it's worth, if we can, if we can get to an agreeable thing on this particular plan, you don't need the waiver. You just need the requirement.
Well, but I don't want to make promises about how an undeveloped property is going to be developed. I can't, I can't you know, say what that's going to be and we also we're, we're entitled under an agreement that we have with the village regarding parking to not be treated worse than anyone else and there are other offices who received waivers. So that's why we're asking for you know, comparable treatment
Sure.
to others in the village.
I think on that last part, it's just, it's without, it's outside of our, our purview for that, so we
That's fine. I just don't want to promise you all something
Yeah, totally.
that I didn't know if I can deliver.
For what it's worth, I think, like, we can, we can structure it to where you can take advantage of the amendment and you become in compliance. And that if that changes, everyone will know and will know what to do as a result of it, if that makes sense. So I think there's basically like I agree, it's not a good, it's not a good place to be and to be like, ah, you know, like, I don't want to, I don't want to be made a liar. I don't want to be, you know, feel like I'm, I'm doing something deceptive. I just want to use my property as, as I see fit. And I think that like, there's a I, I think there's a way we can structure it to where it's just very explicit about like what the state is right now. If the state changes, then, then maybe we need to reevaluate the, the site plan. Maybe we need to to pursue a waiver or something else. But I think as, as it currently proposed, I think this is essentially straightforward and that we can basically get to just an, an agreement with maybe a small caveat about if things change in the future, then we maybe, this should come back before the planning board just to reevaluate.
I think just to roll on the same page, I think with the applicant's asking for issues, thinks she would rather just have waivers and not have an agreement with this other property, not relend these other spaces. But if the planning board is unwilling to grant the, or recommend the waivers, the village board is unwilling to grant them, then
I didn't realize, I think, I think we are, we are required to, to seek waivers regardless. We just, we can say that we don't think they should be given, right?
Right, well, I just want to make sure everyone, we're all on the same page as far as what Ms. Strauss is asking for.
Yeah, thank you.
So are, so I, it sounds like then it would be your preference to seek the waivers and not worry about the, this other property and not have an agreement for this other property?
That would be fair.
Okay, okay. So we can, we can take that path.
I would also just say that the vacant lot, it's only showing like three or four cars on it.
Yeah.
You can fit like eight, eight cars on there. I think the architect
Well, if we, if we pursue, if we pursue the path of the village granting the waiver, then we don't have to worry about it.
It won't matter, just for your comfort about
I think, I think probably the are you seeking, would you be seeking a waiver for all eight unless you have three that are not in that other structure? Are they, would they, are they part of that?
We're seeking a waiver for all eight, but there's no plans to develop the parking lot.
And, but, and but these three that are in, that are outside, are those on, are those on a different lot than, than the office space?
Yes.
Also, but also one that you own? Okay, gotcha. Okay. All right, so I think then the the next step, we should get just clear on what we're asking for based on, to kind of get the, the square footage corrected. So if you can get us an updated site plan
Do you want me to just submit that or do you want me to come back with it?
You can just, you can, you can submit it. I think like we think we know it's either what is here or it is the other number that we talked about. So I think that's probably fine. And because this is, this would be an amendment to a previous planning board decision. We'd basically be amending it with a, with conditioned on approval of a waiver. I guess it would make, it wouldn't make sense to do that until we receive the waiver from the village board. So, so basically, I guess we could probably vote now to approve me to, to, to send a request to the village board for a waiver.
Yeah, I mean, as long as we're sure on the, the number of waivers.
I'm not sure on the number of waivers.
Well, the number that are being requested.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's
We can, we can still, I think we can still have a discussion about what we're willing to support.
Sure.
You know, and that's, that's that's a worthwhile discussion.
So these three stay, they're real?
No, no, so, so, so this is the lot
Right.
of, of, of concern right now. The, the property owner of this lot happens to also own
Right, gotcha.
which have, which have available parking.
Right.
The, the request right now is rather than leverage those spots, the applicant would like to pursue a waiver from the village board for all, for all eight in particular. So one, we the, the question of me being approved to seek that out, but also what do we want to say in our, in our particular part of that? And our recommendation about, do we want all eight waivers to be given? Do we want five of them? Do we want three of them? How are we reasoning about that? So I think probably just given given the need to, to get this updated, to get clarity on the waiver and to give the board members a just a chance to figure out, we know what your desire is and to figure out how we feel about it, how we want to, to compose a judgment, to go kind of ferry along with the request for the waivers.
Okay.
That we will come back to this next time and with the intent of having all our ducks in a row about exactly what we're going to be sending to who and what we're going to be saying. And does that make sense for folks?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'd also love to see the prior paperwork from the
The 2022 adjustment.
Our amendments from the, yeah, from the
Yeah, we can get that. Yeah.
As possible.
I don't have a signed copy in my files. It should be here somewhere.
It would just be the resolution?
Yeah, the resolution and the plan itself.
Thank you.
And then procedurally, because this is amendment, you could choose to waive the public hearing requirement if you want.
Sure. We can, I think we can probably discuss that next time. Actually, it doesn't really make sense to even entertain it until we get a response back from the village board anyway, so. I think that's all we needed. So as soon as you're able to send an, an updated site plan, I'll circulate it among the members. Everyone will kind of be thinking about how we want to respond. We'll compose that next time and we'll send it off and let you know.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Serena.
Okay. Next. We have a public hearing for Six East Velvet Ear. But before we get into that, we actually need to discuss the, the Seager status of, of this application. I think from, from my perspective, this is seems like a relatively straightforward right do.
So this is an unlisted action.
Unlisted.
A subdivision, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry, but it, but it is a, it's a likely a neg back.
It could be. So to establish that, we have to go through part two of the EAF.
Yeah.
And that will consist of me reading 11 questions to the board and you'll answer no or small impact or yes, moderate to large impact. And based on that, you can make a determination of significance, which will be a negative declaration. There will be no significant environmental impacts or positive. So I'll go ahead and read through these questions and the board can kind of collectively answer, yes, sir. All right, so one, will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulations?
No.
Two, will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
My, I would say mildly, so, so we're adding, adding
So no impact or small impact?
I would say, I would say small impacts.
Will the proposed impact impair the character or quality of the existing community?
Moderate.
You think moderate? You want to say more about that?
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, it's a, it's a tight street. The, the lot is not a uniform lot in depth that actually narrows down as you're heading toward the back of the street. So, so this, this actual block, the part, the subdivision part is actually getting narrower and narrower. The, the street will start to feel more congested, I think, more, more built up.
And they're going to take out some big trees. There are some that are on 30 inch diameter and a 27 inch diameter. These are good sized trees.
So Can I ask you a question real quick? Right, just because that's dependent on what they're going to build on it, right?
Yeah, I mean, as part of the
I'm not still being honest.
Right, but as part of the board's secret review, they have to look at the, the long-term
Okay.
impacts and the likely impacts. So just with that, you know, keep in mind too, that on one side we have no impact or small impact and on the other side we have modern impact or large impact, so just keep that in mind. No, no, answering no doesn't mean no impact whatsoever.
I, I definitely hear, I definitely hear that. I think, given the, the the lot, the, the kind of revised lot density is I think comparable to other parts of the street. So it's not like there's like a, a section where you'd have like a cluster versus, versus, I mean, the, the, I feel like the lot sizes on the other side are also like, they're not as expansive as, as this lot, as example, or the original lot. So I would, I, I think I probably fall more on the small, but
I mean, it's even addressed in one of these letters. I think the setbacks and so forth are important, but I think, so
Yeah.
So we're, we're, we're setting ourselves up for a piece of property that can, that's, I guess, going to be sold. And then what's the potential buyer going to be for? And what are they going to be able to do and what are expectations going to be for? And then what are our expectations going to be for that buyer?
Right, and that's, yeah, that's kind of the open question that you're answering.
Yeah.
Can you go over the criteria again one more time?
Sure. So it's, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
I don't see how we could say it's more than the, the, the small impact myself. I, I just you know, dividing it. I don't think it's to me, it doesn't seem like a major impact. That's
I'll go with small. Is there a reason we're doing this before we like hear from everybody that lives in there?
Procedurally, it's important to establish secret before we get into this.
And that doesn't mean that you can't, you know, talk about these same things again once the public hearing is open. This is just strictly for secret.
Yeah.
Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? So in this case, there's no, the property is not part of a critical environmental area, so So in this case, there's no, the property's not part of a critical environmental area, so uh, that question kind of answers itself. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkways?
Now, that's where I think.
I understand, it's a small increase in, one more house.
Yeah, I said small.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? Uh, will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies?
Uh, and then it will all likely draw on it, yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
So, small impact or large impact?
Small. Well, we had that report, yeah, that they're gonna have to tap into it, to.
The ninety.
Yeah.
The, the usage of a, of a residential lot is, is, you know.
Right. It's not gonna be a major impact, but it will, it's something that they have to address, right?
Okay. And then same question for uh, wastewater treatment utilities? Same answer. Uh, will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources?
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say small, um, I think that, that, for me, the trees are a part of that.
Yeah.
Uh, so.
All right, will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources, for example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, flora and fauna?
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say small.
We, we've imposed a drainage system, right?
Well, the, there's been an analysis by the applicant engineer, um, that are, that the village engineer has analyzed and agrees with, that uh, if implemented, would mitigate.
Okay.
Groundwater, uh, but there's nothing, we haven't done anything with that information, because it hasn't happened here yet.
Okay, so small.
Uh, will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems?
Yeah, that's about a previous comment.
Yeah.
So, small impact for that as well. And last question, will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health?
Small thing.
Alright, so based on your answer to those little questions, which was no for all of them, you can either make a determination.
Not too boring.
Oh, yeah, so negative declaration or positive, uh, if someone wants to uh, to make a, a motion to uh, adopt either one of those.
Why don't you, are we ready for a motion, because you know how to say it?
Uh, I'll make a motion to uh, make a negative declaration.
Do we have a second?
Second.
On the favor?
Alright.
Uh, now that we've made it, um, I would like to open uh, to uh, the public in the room or online to make any comment about that declaration before we move on to public hearing, in which time you'll also have a chance to talk about the uh, the details of the application in particular. This is only um, about the Seeger declaration that we just made. So if anyone has any comments to make about that, happy to hear it. Okay, great. Um, well, I think since we're here, um, and uh, we've, we've made the notice for, for the hearing, I think we can go ahead and uh, proceed uh, with the public hearing. Um. Um, so can I get a, um, a motion to uh, open the public hearing for Sixth East Belvedere application for subdivision?
I'll make a motion to open the application for Sixth, Sixth East Belvedere.
The public hearing.
The public hearing.
Second, on favor? Uh, thanks. Alright, to start things off, just um, I'd like to read the, the um, the notice into the hearing. And. Go ahead then.
You should. It's not your neighbor, man.
Hi. A little wastewater, yeah. Like a whirl, pretty still in there.
I ha- I have it. A little bit deeper than that, alright, um. Um. Alright, the planning board will consider uh, the application by uh, uh, Chiopulini, Chiopulini, I don't, you gonna help me with that one?
Chiopulini.
Chi, Chiopulini? Chiopulini, engineering?
Oh, yeah, Chiopulini, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, Chiopulini Engineering. Um, for a minor subdivision of land pursued to chapter one eleven of Village Code. So the property designated forty eight dot eighteen dash four dash fourteen on text map is at east, sixth east Belvedere, Old Spring, New York, one oh five one six, the new residential neighborhood district of R and. Uh, the owner is uh, in the property holdings. Um, the planning board will consider all uh, verbal and or written statements from all persons interested in the proposed application and the various matters described above, the planning board will also consider such further release as at times necessary. Alright, so let's go through a couple of just basic administrative things, um, from issues with, with the clerk. Um, has the notice been timely published in the official newspaper? Great. Has the applicant provided uh, proof of mailing to affected parties?
Yes.
Uh, we have uh, copies of that sort of by mail. Uh, if anyone would like to just do a quick scan, made to confirm that we have notified all of the events that we uh, felt like should be notified. Alright, um, has the applicant, um, sorry, uh, has the village clerk um, received any comments from the public, either in writing, or email, or in person? Written comments, okay? Um, and uh, just to restate the secret determination, um, neg deck or um, unlisted act. Um, alright, um, I'll ask the applicant to come and describe to the public for the first time, uh, the proposed action, uh, and uh, um, what you hope to have happen, and um, um, uh, if you could also kind of walk through um, briefly, like what the, what your engineer has, has provided, and also have, will um, follow up with uh, his, his take on the analysis as well.
Um, sure. So uh, we've complied with everything that the village has asked to uh, give, which is, I wish I had a, kind of me to tell you the truth.
Yeah.
Um, can I borrow one, like, a chance? Sure.
Looking for the site plan?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's small.
Yeah, the eight and a half by elevens are kind of rough to read.
I have a very strong idea.
Do you? Thanks, Josh.
Man, this is.
Josh has been helpful throughout this entire process, let me tell you. Yeah.
That's just, just right.
So, so what we're hoping to do is make one parcel into two. So just to subdivide East Belvedere into two plots. Um, we have the survey for the house, and then we've done the survey for the proposed plots. Um, my engineer has gone through and done the, the water and sewer, um, um, what was it, the, the questions that he had for, um, if it was gonna make a significant impact on the, you know, the sewer and the water, um, we've also gone through and done uh, the soil testing to make sure that there isn't gonna be like a significant impact with the, the groundwater. Um, my surveyor outlined all the trees, all the monuments, we've really just made a, a pretty good art project of this entire plot, I think. Uh, yeah, I'm not sure what else.
Um, maybe worth pointing out some of the, the, the specific changes we asked for, um, and that you, that you, that you granted uh, the board in, in the course of this um, our workshop.
Yeah, absolutely, so, my engineer, we did the stormwater analysis and soil testing, as I said, um, which came back, it was actually pretty quick in that location, like I've told in, in the past, uh, cuz I know that East Belvedere had a lot of issues with um, you know, groundwater, but on our side, it's been perfect, we haven't had any issues, so uh, my engineer was happy with the soil testing that we had done. Um, and then we also provided, uh, we got letters from the, the sewer department, and I know that we have to tap into that main line that's on nine D, um, but I think that was kind of, kind of ordinary, that that was a, pretty much, uh, we all knew that was gonna happen, um. I do, and I guess we were also trying to address the situation with the um, it was, uh, with where the setbacks were gonna go, which is kind of like that gray area that I feel that the village like has in general, because in our deed, it says that we own to the center of that, of that street there, right? And then we had to do the setbacks off the gravel, which is fine, um, but it's, that, that plot is uh, it's, it's a decent size, and, and I feel like, again, we have, because we've complied with everything, it's, it's pretty much, it is, but it is, it's a wee little spot.
Yeah. Um, so maybe I'll, I'll um, hand it off to Will, like, one of the things I think is worth pointing off, uh, pointing about the, the stormwater analysis, the um, one of the motivations from, from the board in integrating is obviously, village has a lot of flooding issues broadly, a lot of concern about our aging infrastructure, um, adding, um, you know, we want folks to be able to add structures and houses, uh, but, but do it safely in a way that um, does not imperil anyone else's property, or the general uh, health and safety of, of villagers uh, everywhere, and so um, the, the, the board uh, requested uh, a deeper analysis with um, um, kind of a, a high standard of, okay, how do we, how do we not just, um, how do we not just not make things worse, how do we, if we can make them a little bit better, that would be preferable.
Absolutely.
Um, and I think the analysis we got back, um, pointed away to that, and Will, if maybe, um, so Will's our, our, um, our village engineer.
Hey, Will.
He's an advocate for the, for the villagers, and um, and uh, Will has taken a look at the, uh, the analysis done by the applicant's engineer. Will, if you could just kind of say, uh, you know, what you, what you uh, feel about that analysis, and, and what you feel like it tells, tells us about the, uh, uh, you know, if that plan is implemented, what it means for the future of that, of that site.
Sure, so, uh, Will Angelou, on engineering, the village's consulting engineer. Um, as you mentioned, to the board, asked the applicant to look at stormwater. Uh, so the applicant's engineer prepared a stormwater analysis, looking at uh, a large storm event, the twenty five year storm event, um, and they determined that their space on the new lot, on the proposed lot, new lot, to put a stormwater system there that will function, that will be able to capture the uh, runoff from the new impervious area that's proposed, would be proposed in that lot. Uh, that the system would, would not uh, create additional runoff onto East Belvedere, thereby not making the situation worse. Now, that, obviously, that they're, so subdivision, what they did was conceptual, so they put in uh, notes on the plots, that way when it goes to the building department, the building department knows that the, a stormwater system will be required to act when it times, uh, when it's time to go build out that piece of property, what that, how big that size of that system would need to be.
Great, um, and maybe just for uh, in, in as layman terms as possible, can you describe the, the remediation proposed?
Sure, so um, the applicant proposes uh, cold tech units, uh, which are underground chambers, uh, essentially, might also call them a drywell, uh, roof leaders and uh, would be connected directly into this drywell. Driveway would be connected via uh, inlet drain and connected into this drywell. So when, during the storms, water goes in there, and then, and stored there to give it time to perk back into the soil. Uh, there are other op- options that could be used when it time, when it's time to go and actually develop the property that would be of equal volume and uh, would be reviewed at that time to make sure that it conforms with this requirement.
Do we have a calculation on that yet, the, the capacity of the drywells?
Uh, the analysis did show, I think it was, I don't wanna misquote, but I think it was six uh, standard sized cold tech units.
I think the, the net, the net change was, was uh, negative, was negative on the, the, the kind of the carrying capacity of the lot, I, as I recall, is that right?
Right, so he compared the runoff to what it's currently coming off the property now, and under proposed conditions, what it would be, and by implementing the system, it would either uh, match or reduce existing conditions.
Great.
Do we know, do you know what the calculated uh, impermeable square footage is?
Uh, he sized it for the maximum allowable build out.
It was a maximum allowable build out, basically like, like, if you built on every inch that you could build.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's, it's essentially a worst case scenario, I'm saying like, okay, if we make the biggest house we can make, with, with the driveway that connects it, and all, and we remove the trees, and we make, and um, what, what is the, what is the resulting lot? I'm saying, well, someone's gonna do it, but it's important to at least like, note what the, you know, what's, what's possible, given, what's legally possible, given the, the dimension of the lot. Um, great, thank you, Will.
Certainly.
Um. Okay, um, I'd also like, just, just for the public's consumption, I, 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 it's available on the website, um, but I'd like to read the letter um, into the record uh, from the water and wastewater department, just to um, uh, make sure uh, we have, we have a view uh, uh, into some uh, uh, kind of dark arts of.
I think that's behind it, by the way.
You know, it's.
It was, yeah, it's so difficult.
Uh.
I'm glad you did.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I couldn't, I emailed, I called, I left voicemails, and I couldn't get a hold of anybody, and I was like, when you guys said you found him, I was like, thank God.
Um, so this was a request from the village board to um, uh, sorry, from the village planning board to um, water and sewer superintendent to help us understand what is the situation with water and sewer for East Belvedere? If there is a new structure that's put on that lot, what is that uh, builder gonna have to deal with, in or, in turn, in terms of connecting that lot um, to water and sewer, as, as, as they will have to. Um, so this letter gives uh, gives clarity to that, um, I encourage anyone who's interested to read it online, but I'll read it for the record here. This is from Matt Krug, uh, Water and Sewer Superintendent, um, dated September ninth, twenty twenty four, for Sixth East Belvedere subdivision. Dear Chairman St. Charles and members of the planning board, at the request of the village engineer, James J. Khan Engineering, I have prepared the comments below uh, with regard to uh, the application to subdivide above property into two lots. The existing water supply lines and related equipment located under East Belvedere Street and servicing the existing house, houses uh, on the property, or the house on the property, the, the Sixth East Belvedere is privately owned. Uh, the maintenance and repair of these existing water supplies are the responsibility of the residents that live along East Sixth uh, Belvedere Street, including uh, the owner of this property. It's my understanding that there uh, was a single shared private water line running from the village uh, water main on Morris Avenue, so it's ninety, uh, most of the way down uh, East Belvedere Street, it's also my understanding that numerous smaller copper lines run from individual, from the individual houses on East Belvedere Street, uh, to that shared private water line. Please, please be advised that pursuant to uh, one thirty five uh, dash five dot J, for all installations or reinstations of service pipes, piping from the house to the village main line, only one property or property unit can be supplied through a single service pipe. Does any new house on the. Does any new house on the proposed lot would have to run its own service pipe directly to the village's main on Morris Avenue? The applicant is referred to chapter one thirty four details on connecting to the village's water system. As for the existing sewer lines in East Belvedere Street, the village installed a sewer line around nineteen seventy continues to own and maintain that public sewer line. The applicant is referred to chapter ninety seven for the village's sewer connection. Additionally, the village has added a capacity in its water and sewer systems to provide service to an additional resident on East Belvedere. Thank you, Matt. For that, that was very illuminating for us. Uh, there's one other thing I wanted to note. Oh, there were, uh, we also asked, uh, you to correct the bulk table table to be measured from, uh, the edge of the road.
The gravel crack, yeah.
Um, okay.
Do we have, uh, updated map?
Yes, that's that's what this this is. Uh, it's very small. Um.
We all copied on that email or was it just this?
It was just me, so.
No, I think it's, I think.
There it was, the one today. There was a big thing where this is, this was, uh, this is a eleventh hour update to make sure that. This. So the import, the important changes that were made here, um, are as described, basically, uh, a previous iteration. Um, although the lot lines go to the center of the street, um, the building inspector, um, uh, correctly pointed out that the, um, the bulk table should be measured, um, from the edge of the street. So, uh, the previous measurements were, uh, in terms of determining conformity in this bulk table of the two new parcels that were being constructed were measured, uh, from the previous one was measured to the center of the street. The new one is measured edge of the street. Uh, so we have new numbers on, uh, the lot area. Um, new numbers on, uh, and, uh, think, uh, on the basically the front, uh, setback of parcel A, um, the lot depth of both parcels. Uh, the building percentage coverage of lot, uh, parcel A. And I think that is.
Where did it go down to?
Uh, sorry, which one, which, uh, which number?
Building percentage of what cover?
Well, that goes up because the total square footage of the lot went down. So the the building didn't shrink with the lot, fortunately. Uh, so, uh, uh, but, um, the 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 change that was that came closest to being nonconforming, but was not is, uh, the new lot depth. It is, um, now eighty point oh five feet. Uh, the minimum required lot depth is eighty. Um, so the, I think that we basically lost seven feet, which is about half the street. It's worth of worth of, uh, of offset there. So, um, uh, no new noncompliance, uh, with with code here. Uh, we have an existing noncompliant for the rear setback of the existing house on parcel A. So, uh, there are no variances required with these, um, with these new law dimension. Um, we'll have a chance to discuss, um, in more depth afterwards. But, um, is there anything, uh, that folks would like to ask or point out that we think would be helpful for the public to make comments about?
Well, I mean, I'll just, you talking about to us?
Yes.
So I actually went out there this afternoon and I measured the gravel at eighteen feet. So there'd be nine foot to the edge of the gravel, not seven.
Well, sorry, the 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 way that the lot depth is measured is it ends up being, because it's at an angle, right?
Okay.
So it ends up having to be an average.
Okay.
Of of, uh.
Gotcha.
Well, would it be okay to read the written comments or is that not?
We're, we're gonna, we're sorry, we're gonna get to that. Um, I'm gonna, um, I'm gonna, we're gonna, as soon as we move on to the public comment part. I just wanna make sure that the 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 public has all the information, um, that we have in order to to make comment about what we what we see.
And where did you just email?
Oh, that was updated version of the.
Ah, okay. So I don't have to keep looking over there?
All right. Um, all right. With that, um, I think we've kind of described the application, uh, the changes that we've requested, the analysis that's been done, um, our understanding of the impact on both current residents and future owners of the new lot. And, um, with that, um, I would like to open the meeting, uh, up to public comment. Um, so a couple of things, um, to note about this section. Um, uh, when you're giving public comment, please state your name and address for the record. Uh, any questions you have should be addressed to the board, not the applicant. Um, the board may, uh, decide, uh, to ask the applicant for clarification, but it's not bound to. And, um, we're not technically required to answer any direct questions unless it's, uh, relates to, um, procedure in particular. Um, and, um, I will kick things off by reading the comments that we have, uh, written into the record. All right. So our first, uh, comment is from Joshua K. Joshua, can I? Um, uh, go ahead and read, read your comments into the record and, um, move, move, uh, to response. Um, for consideration by the planning board, I resided to East Belvedere Street, which is the immediate neighbor of Sixty's Belvedere, proposed parcel A, the westward towards nine D. I wish the applicant every success in his project, but I have two concerns regarding the proposed new structure. The first regards setbacks, my understanding that the front wall of the house should be situated no less than twenty five feet from the road. The sketch plan submits, uh, submitted through the center line of the road as if it were the start of the setback. This suggests the edge of the road is suitable for the front wall of the house to be built with no further setback. I'm gonna just go reread this and then we'll, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll kind of, uh, discuss on board. Elsewhere, uh, on the street, uh, the front setback is from the edge of the street, i.e. the beginning of what would normally call the private frontage, not not for a center line, attached to street map. Um, my title report on my own property, which shows the road, lot dimensions, which help by context of the applicant. To present a uniform appearance and consistent street wall, uh, which is my understanding the village quote undertakes to preserve. Any new structure should follow this or similar setback, uh, that is about fifty feet from the front line. I would suggest that, uh, possibly variance could be sought to allow less than twenty, uh, feet rear, uh, yard setback to make room for structure without violating the existing, uh, front setback. My second concern relates to water supply. The street's water line has come under scrutiny from time to time. Uh, and it was said to be the case years ago, um, that the line was not adequate to support additional houses. Village resident who owns an undeveloped parcel, um, reported that he would need an updated or new line in order to build. Don't know the details of this matter, but I hope the village will assess, uh, the water infrastructure on the street to make sure it is adequate. Um, uh, to the purpose, um, without a loss of water pressure or jeopardizing the integrity of the water supply to its homes. Sincerely, Joshua K. Um, we have one more to read, but, uh, Josh, since you're here and because, uh, we provided additional information, I think, related to a number of your comments. I'll give you an opportunity to add anything, um, or, um, respond to the new information that you heard today.
Sure. Uh, first on the water, I understand, uh, that concern is put aside. I do have a related concern, maybe doesn't have to with the subdivision, but there's going to be a new line. There's, I'm not sure that that's gonna run through my front yard, which I think might be worth considering.
Yeah, well, you would have, you would, uh, any new bill that would, that would be doing something like that would, uh, would have to be. You know, there's property rights stuff that that's going on that you would be entitled to. So I think that would be a whole separate thing you you should absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And and also I caught from earlier comments, I didn't consider the view shed with respect to any big trees that have to come down.
Yeah.
All the shadow.
Yeah.
My, there seems, there is some confusion or there's an anomaly with this property. And that it owns the center line of the road, the one that we're talking about.
Sure.
Because my property next to it doesn't. And the property across the street that abuts it doesn't. And the plans that show, you know, the title search that I've got that shows where the road should be.
Yeah.
Pretty clear. So.
Yeah.
As long as that's understood, I, the gravel is not the edge of the road or the rest of the road.
Yeah.
So this new front city kind of sign, even adjusted by seven feet or whatever it is, would be quite a significant change in what you see when you look down the street.
Yeah.
That was what I want.
Awesome. Thank you. All right, I will read, um. I'll read the other, um, uh, written comment into the, uh, into record and then we will open, um, the room to comment. This is from, um, Christine and Raymond Bakor. Um, we own five East Belvedere and have been residents since twenty twenty. Thank you for hearing our concerns. In addition to the new house being placed too close to the road, we're considering, uh, the effect of additional traffic will have on our already troubled road. The surface is unpaved and, uh, not properly treated, uh, for a dirt road. So we are plagued with many deep potholes. Uh, while we are happy the village occasionally attends to these holes, new holes appear at different locations almost immediately. With recent construction, we have become aware of the damage additional traffic can do. As bad as it already is, we're concerned for the future if there is a new house. Thank you. Thank you, Christine and Raymond. All right, um, I'll open, uh, comments to the room.
I'm Patricia Kennedy.
Okay.
And I live at number one, East Belvedere. And I'm listening to all the legal parts of this.
Yeah.
The actual everyday living on Belvedere has been really difficult.
Correct.
Over the past year, we've had two big projects on our unpaid street.
What were those projects?
One was the, um, the one next to Josh, that was a renovation and an addition. And at the end, the very end of the street, there was a tear down and then building of a really large house. So there's been trucks in and out constantly. It's been really difficult.
Yeah.
They're tearing up the road, which has basically ruined my driveway. And I can't really get the driveway repaired until I know what the road's gonna look like when all of this construction.
Yeah.
Is finally finished. But now it looks like it won't be finished. There was yet another house being built.
Yeah.
I mean, the impact of just living there and please come on a rainy day and see what it looks like there when the rain, the rain is running down the street like a river.
Yeah.
Um, it's very difficult. It's noisy. It's the impact of having all of this going on on our street.
Yeah.
Has really affected our quality of life. So I just came to make, make that known.
Thank you for sharing that.
Consider the residents who are there every day.
Yeah. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Uh, do we have any other folks who would like to make comment?
I'm Colin Cute. I'm the owner of ten East Belvedere.
Okay.
And I am, uh, also wishing the applicant every success as as Josh does as well. And, um, also hearing what Pat just said and feeling, um, unavoidably responsible for some of her problems, which I was not aware of until right now. Uh, I have wanted to fill those potholes myself and like pulling Arnold Schwarzenegger, so to speak, um, who's been known for filling potholes on his own street.
Yeah.
Um, but I haven't done that and and I would, but I haven't been, I'm not sure that I would. And one thing I thought about was raising the, adding it will make the road even higher. And I don't think we want the road to be hard. So that's one, that aside. My only question regarding the subdivision and and I'm here on a learning, uh, expedition is that I would very much like to see that become a village street someday. And I'm aware that the property goes to the center of the street. And so I wonder, uh, as I'm a builder, I'm not, I have no legal knowledge. I wonder if it becomes almost impossible for the village to assume ownership of a street or or act as owners of a street that they don't actually physically own it. It belongs to a lot. And I wonder if were the village to undertake, you know, taking over this street someday, if there's gonna be a negotiation with people who own part of the actual street itself. And if by the lot being two lots, now they have to negotiate with, the village is negotiating with two owners rather than one owner. And does that make it harder? I have nothing against the idea of a subdivision. I just find that to be something that should be considered. And perhaps this is the time to put measures in that could sort of preventative measures so that, yes, whenever all the planets line up and and maybe that becomes a public street. There has been some anticipation of what could perhaps make that, that procedure a little more difficult. I wanna make it simpler, not more difficult. Other than that, I mean, I'm, I have no problem with the additional house and subdivision. It's just a question, really.
Yeah.
Are you guys gonna consider that? And 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 is there any knowledge you have already? Like, how does the village go about making a road of a public? You know?
Yeah.
A public access road when people own it?
Yeah, so, uh, I have a couple of comments. Um, first, thank you. Uh, appreciate the the comment about the, uh, about the application, um, and the state of the state of the neighborhood. It's always good context for us. Just to point out for everyone that that the purview of this board does not extend to the status of the street. It's not a thing we can make a determination about, except insofar as how we're treating it with respect to this application, we're treating it as private. I think, um, to your latter question, my understanding is that just forgetting our our particular village and our particular situation at East Belvedere, that villages are empowered to, uh, make rights of way. Um, especially when that right of way have already already been established. Um, Jonathan, if you wanna to add some more broad context to reassure, uh, residents about about the ability of of the board, of the village to be able to do things like that?
Sure. Yeah, no, it's a, it's a great question. And I think the answer is kind of a complex legal answer. But, um, I don't think that this subdivision would complicate things for the village in the future.
Okay.
And that's just my, my legal opinion.
And that wouldn't be, in the end, the purview of planning board.
Right. Well, that's a good point, too, is is I don't know that the planning board could necessarily prevent the subdivision to potentially make things easier.
Yeah, it is in the future. Right. So we we can only address
Yeah.
the the application. We can't really address.
Yeah, I didn't expect the planning board would would have the answer to that. I I was mostly just here because I wanted to see if you would comment on my fence.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. About, um.
I'd give, if it was up to me, I'd give you ten.
So, so, but I stayed here, um, and I just wanted to, to see if that question was not necessarily may maybe things echo through the village government and it gets heard elsewhere.
I'll say, I think people, I think people are are looking at it very closely and and are interested in in. I mean, I think no, nobody likes states of ambiguity. It's uncomfortable. So, um, uh, but from from our perspective, uh, for this application, and the only reason I'm, I'm not suggesting that yours does any otherwise. But just for clarity for everybody who.
Not your deal.
Yeah, yeah. It's outside of our.
I get it. During this discovery process, I found myself speaking to a lot of different people in the village. So I probably have some information for you, too.
Oh, you you talked about this?
Oh, no. It's me, Josh, and a bunch of others.
Okay.
And also Pat, by the way, I did fill those holes one time with item four and I took a tamper down. I did notice they were coming up again, so I have no problem filling them again and just getting that situated. It's no big deal. And just get in that situated, it's no big deal.
That's helpful, but it's an ongoing.
But if I can mitigate any of your stress, I will.
Do we have any, do we have any additional comments from the room or the board or, or online? Then I'll go ahead and ask permission to close the public comment part for the record.
Yeah, I wondered.
Well, then we'll, we'll, we'll have our period of discuss, um, but it's just in terms of, uh. The public hearing. For public comments, to be clear.
Okay, I just wanted to verify where she lived. Do you live across from him?
Yes, number one.
One, and then, and you're two next to six.
You're northwest then, right? You, of, of where this property is, you, you're west next to Josh, right? And you'd be on the north side of the street, I guess.
I get a motion to close the public comment?
I move that we close the public comment on six East Velvetir on the record.
Alright, now we're moving on to the board comment period. Um, this is kind of a synthesis time where we, where we reflect on. Uh, everything we, we've learned about the, the application. And, uh, kind of, but we think about the impact and the application as a, as a whole and share information and, and, uh. I can go ahead and I could start with, with, um, my, with my, um. First, I, I appreciate the, the cooperation of the applicant of, of providing analyses and updates. All the ways that we, um, asked for it, um, especially in ways that are, um, really meant to provide more. Safety for the village as a whole, um, and understanding what the impact of this change, uh, would be. I think that it is, uh, it is a change that is, um, is. Possible, but it is tight as, as the dimensional table suggests, like it is, it is. Uh, it meets the, the legal requirements for a lot in, in district. I do, as I would, as I would for any change in a lot, I mourn the, the eventual loss of the trees that will be there. And, uh, and I also have a lot of sympathy for the. Um, the ways in which construction generally impacts residents of any street. And in particular, a street that is in not the best of repair, is not paved. And suffers from rapid degradation from weather and traffic. I think that, that makes this, um, application, uh, especially challenging. Also note that. In treating this app, in, in treating the street as a private street, um, the code does. Does require, um, that a subdivider on a private street update a street to be compliant with code. That is, that is the requirement. I think in this particular case, given the state of the street, it is a, it is a, um. An unusually onerous and painful requirement to levy on this particular small subdivision on a small part of. Uh, um, the broader street, so, um, that's something that I would, um, consider. Waiving as a, as a requirement for this particular, um, subdivision. And, yeah, those are some, those are some thoughts.
This is a private road, right? So the responsibility is of the homeowners within that development to maintain the road?
So is there? I think there's a, a little bit of a nuance here too, because I think for the purpose of this application, the planning board is treating. It as a private road, but in the, the broader picture, I don't think the planning board can really take a position as to. Whether it's a public street or a private street and be responsible for maintaining it.
Okay, so that's something that's out of our purview.
And so, if there are potholes, it's up to the people that live there to.
It's, in this case, it, it's kind of, it's always, it's been a gray area for a long time.
Can I say something about that? The, the village has been, um, filling in potholes and they also plow. So it's kind of like an old grandfathered in situation, even though it is a private street.
Should add a lot to that, because there's other, the current state of the road is created by the village from the previous.
Yeah, there, there's a, there's a long history that I desperately do not want to get into here, so.
I, I know it's out of our purview, but it's just, it's, it's just something that I, I wanted to clear up whose responsibility is it. And it's not, if it, if it has, from what Jonathan said, it shouldn't have any bearing on this application, so then.
Part of our, the utility for us as saying for the purpose of this application, because it introduces, it is the most strict of requirements. Is to treat it as a private road, which, uh, given the state, it's not a reasonable thing, not unreasonable thing to treat it as. The set of requirements that is induced by the code, say, oh, but you're subdividing on a private, on a private road. You're subdividing on a private road, code says you must update that private road to be in compliance with village code. In this case, it's a small subdivision on a larger street. I feel, and folks can disagree with me here, but I, but I, I feel that it, the, the imposition to the applicant to say, okay. Now, okay, because you wanted to do the subdivision, you need to dig up the whole street. You need to, to fix the infrastructure and need, and you need to pave it and put appropriate drainage. Feels like. It feels, it feels like an unreasonable, uh, expectation here, um, given the, the situation.
Given the size and the, and, and the, the plot and the overall. The, the size of it in comparison to, to the whole. Yeah, subdivision, right. Or the whole, um, the, I guess, the. What would you call it? The whole, uh, private community, I guess.
Right, the share, the share of the, of the, uh, community. Where are you planning, but I'm not sure if you're aware, we're. So, um, so every, every meeting I learn something new and this is, this has definitely been a very interesting. Application for us and it's the first subdivision we've done, so, um, the applicant has done an amazing job and really followed through with, with a, you know. A laundry list of, of, uh, requests that we've given him, so well done. Um, but it, this is also a mess, right? This is a, since I'm just gonna speak broadly and philosophically. But, uh, but given that, given that, you know, it's a, it's a, it's a public street, um, with. Sorry, private street with, with, you know, in, infrastructure challenges to begin with. Um, and, um, and even, you know, quirks within, within the, the plot itself. I, it's, it's, it's challenging, uh, on, on one hand, um, outside, you know, the, um. The, the scope of the planning board, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of, of increasing housing, increasing density of housing. It's, I think, you know, we have housing, a housing crisis. Um, uh, and maybe we all have to absorb some of that, but I also really do feel for, you know. Uh, people's, um, impact on quality of life and, and impact on, on the infrastructure, if the infrastructure is not. Um, able to, to deal with that, so I, I, I'm gonna speak to the village and, and we have, we, we have to address. The bigger issues and that is, uh, figure out how, how the village can, can be more involved in managing this. Um, I guess that, 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 they're my, they're my basic thoughts on, on this. Thanks, man.
No, I, yeah, my comment was, was basically to see what our purview was based on. Based on the, the, the private road aspect. And now that I understand that, I, I know the limitations. I do agree that. That the waiver is in order because it's unfair for this small subdivision to have to do anything, you know, for that. Private road other than, you know, give assurances that they're not gonna tear up the road, even if it disrepair, you know, but that's. You know, that's nothing that we could really ask it, right? It's just something that, you know, it's a common curse. So that's really my comments on, on the specific subject, because I think it's pretty cut and dry what we, what's in, what's in front of us, so what, what we have to judge it on.
Yeah, um, yeah, it really feels for the continued. Upheaval of, for a street that probably has not. Hadn't up for a long time, did not have upheaval and seems to have had upheaval. For the last multiple number of years, I guess, since the house at the end of the street, uh, your re. Redo of the house that got water in it. And, and all, and the trees, um, they concern me. Bunch of them are gonna have to go, to, to put a house in there. I do wonder if, uh, any, uh, building that gets done, uh, if there can be a, um. You know, maintenance of the street requirement put in, um. I mean, I, I, we have decibel limits, we have, you know, hours of the day you can, you know, use your nail gun. But, I mean, I, I went on the street today and in my little Prius, it wasn't bad. But I think when this first came up, I went on and it was like, I really wanted a four, but, uh, you know, I, I wanted a pickup. Uh, so I, I definitely can see that. Um, so I don't know if we can. Uh, make any requirement, um. For them to, uh, for construction to, you know, maintain the street, uh. Without, uh, you know, when. Every, you know, where, you know, smooth it over every day when they're done for the day.
Um, well, there's, there's kind of three places where the board has. Uh, can exert power on the future right now. There's, in the resolution we make, uh, here, today or later. Uh, notes on the plat to be filed, which the applicant has added notes, uh, relating to. Um, the stormwater remediation and this kind of the state of. Uh, water and sewer access.
You obviously just make a comment. When, when and if it is subdivided, I already have a buyer lined up and the buyer is a land buyer. So he just holds property for the most part. I'm not saying he's never gonna, you know, build on it, but just a comment, like he's not gonna, you know. Get in there and just start ripping things down, who knows?
Under, understood. I, it, in, in some ways it doesn't matter, uh, because we don't know.
I just wanna make sure that everybody knows, it's not like it's sold and the guy's getting in there with a bulldozer and. I don't know, he, cause he has multiple properties that he hasn't done anything with, so I don't, I don't know what his plan is for the future.
Yeah, yeah, uh, understood. And, and in most ways, it doesn't really matter to the board, because we have to just. Understand that we're, we're saying with the subdivision, there's a new lot, it's its own residential. Go do whatever you want to do in a, in a new residential lot. So, so, uh, so I noted in the resolution on the plat, there's an additional, um, where we can recor- record a declaration. Um, Jonathan, do you wanna explain what that is?
Yeah, it's, it's kind of, um, along the lines of an easement and it would be a document that you record with the county clerk. So whenever a future buyer does a title search, they'll see this declaration that states, um, property must have these stormwater remediation. Features, the property must connect to the water main out on ninety.
Just reiterating what you've written on the, on the plat itself.
It just shows up in a, in an additional place.
Setbacks are measured from the edge of the gravel road, not from the center.
This is a part of the. It's a part of like, that's like Greg, Greg, the building inspector is, uh, that's part of him determining what like. Like, how he would be evaluating any future build there, so I don't know. Do we, I don't, do we would need to make a note about that in the?
No, I don't think you would, because that, um, you know, the, the plat is gonna show that all the measurements are from the edge of the gravel as is. And, um. Even when a home is built. The setbacks will be determined.
Um, so those are the three places where we can, we can put, put in, uh, stuff from us. In terms of. I'm gonna, I'm going to guess, but I will let Jonathan, uh, weigh in. Feels like, uh, a requirement on a future, on a future build that extends beyond the boundaries. Of the lot that isn't governed by other things like the water department and things like that, like. It's, would be hard for us to articulate and, and add effectively. Would you?
Yeah, I would agree with that. And I think, you know, two conditions always have to be reasonable and there's kind of the question of. You know, what, uh, what is the scope of conditions that the board can add, you know, when is it too much?
Yeah, yeah. And I, I think in terms of, um, the things that I think are important, I mean, I think. A lot of things are important here, a lot of things of, of course, like, we wish we could perfectly control the future to, to make. Life as, as easy as possible for residents, uh, on the street and elsewhere. I think the places that we have the most purview on and that we can make the most impact on are on the stormwater remediation. And, and on making sure future, uh, buyers and developers, whether it's the one that you have lined up or the one he's helped to. Uh, the one they sell it to, or, you know, whoever ends up deciding, great, I wanna build a house here. That it's very obvious when they are making that transaction, what is, the, what is, what is gonna be imposed upon them? In order to actually build a house there, because you don't want to buy a property. You know, have plans for a dream home and you scope it out and then. Other, uh, you know, forty thousand dollars digging up a street and installing a water line down. It's just like that it's not, that someone who bought an old house and got plenty of surprises in it. It's not fun, it's not a fun experience. And I think those are things that we can, those are things that we can do that was in our purview. That will travel along with, with the property itself, um, and will, will at least inform any future. Uh, what is gonna be required in order to leave the village, um, where it is. Um, so I think for, for me, I would, I would encourage if we, we do move forward. That, uh, that we, that we actually do engage all three of those, uh, for stormwater, uh, for noting stormwater remediation. And the way in which they, um. Uh, someone who develops it would connect to the water.
Okay, yeah.
And I think at this point, we know the shape of the application, the shape of, of a resolution that sounds. Acceptable to the board. Uh, approval with these stipulations. That sounds.
I, I think there's one more thing I should have covered before we get to that point too, and that is that the code actually has provision about, um. Recreational space and it's kind of this, uh, requirement that really doesn't fit into an application like this. Uh, and it basically says that if you're doing a subdivision, you have to like carve out some land for a park, which obviously.
For a major.
Uh, it's, it's for, uh, all subdivisions.
For all subdivisions, okay.
But, uh, obviously that's not feasible or even possible here. There's a provision that allows app, the board to, to waive that requirement in lieu of the applicant paying a recreation fee. Except by, uh, the village board.
In terms of. Um, in terms of the process of like now. Um, in terms of the process of like now to. Got a similar waiver to the parking waiver where we. Um, where we said.
Yeah, not even, you just, it's something where if you waive it, um, that satisfies it, the applicant can take care of that.
Okay, so it's up to the, the applicant of the village board to establish what a reasonable.
I think it's set.
It's set, okay.
The village, it's um, once you grant the waiver, the applicant doesn't have to go again to the village board and seek a waiver.
I'm, I'm comfortable adding that waiver.
Do we have a motion for that?
Motion to the whole thing.
To uh, to waive the other requirement of recreational spaces.
Okay.
Um, so with that, uh, we had the public hearing tonight, uh, your comments uh from the public, you may. Wish to consider those and think about what if any additional conditions you might want to make part of the approval. Maybe there are none, uh, chairman discussed a couple of conditions that I think have to be included to make the subdivision legally viable. Um, so it's up to the board members at this point, uh, how you wanna proceed.
But I think um. I think that like uh. We're basically, we're missing a, a, a motion to approve with a set of provisions, right?
Right, and, and we can talk about those conditions too, just so everyone is crystal clear on, on what they would be.
I think those are the ones, the ones we've been talking about.
Plus, um, payment of any uh escrow, outstanding escrow fees. Uh, compliance with any outstanding uh engineering comments, so that I, this would probably be a good time actually to. Check in with Will, make sure that he is uh good with everything that's been addressed by the applicant's engineer.
Will?
Um, I think everything's been addressed, um. The note regarding the stormwater, I just wanna look a little more closely at on the plat, but I don't think that office should hold anything up.
The, the applicant may have already satisfied that condition, but we'll still leave it as a condition. On the resolution. And same with the, the water line.
The water and sewage, right?
Uh, the sewage, I don't think, uh, I think the, the water and sewer department said that the sewage is not uh an issue in the same way that the water supply is.
Yeah, it's capacity in the sewer.
But the, but it, but it's, it's in a standard spot, it's cause it goes down the center of the.
Not it's, it's doesn't have to go to uh ninety.
Yeah, right.
And we have a, a plat that shows it twenty-five feet from the uh. End of the side of the street.
For what now?
So, this one is like, and it says like a rectangle around it.
All right, the, the one.
This one here?
This one here, this is the one, this one, the one that was sent to, to you and um, so you can see that. Um, so here is uh the property line, which is near the road. We have the edge of the gravel here and um, you can see the, the new setback. Uh, measurements are here to here. Uh, and then you can see the numbers down here in the bulk table.
So what kind of width is it?
So from here to here? So where are you asking, what would, what would you?
From the front line to the back one. Where the narrowest spot.
Um, so the, you're talking about the, what the lot depth is.
What the buildable space.
Of the buildable space.
Yeah, the, the dash with the double dots.
Um, we have the square footage and we have the assertion that a fifty foot by fifty foot. Um. Uh. Square fits in fifty percent of the lot.
Well. Fifty foot.
It, it's kind of an unusual dimensional requirement, I don't fully understand it uh myself, but uh.
So at, at the, at the narrow end of the lot, have they?
That I don't think we know, cause I don't think that the code requires the applicant to.
Yeah, the, the, it's the lot, the, the lot depth is, I think it ends up being the average. The average depth measured across the frontage of this, of the pro, of the lot. So basically, if you, if you measure the depth. Everywhere, everywhere along the front edge to the back edge and you've got the average of that, that would be the lot depth.
Uh, you see your average trap is.
Yeah.
So what is the average depth then?
Uh, it is eighty-eight.
Eighty-eight.
Point two five, eighty point oh five.
Then minus twenty feet on the back and twenty-five feet on the front. On average.
So then you put.
It will, would, would that varies, that varies across the.
Twenty, yeah, that build, build that's like twenty feet.
Yeah.
At the, at the, at the, at the eastern end of the property.
Yeah, so you probably wouldn't do that.
It's gonna be really awkward.
So with, like following setbacks, it's gonna be a very awkward property.
And ultimately, that's, you know, whoever buys it and wants to build, that's the other prerogative, that's. If they can come up with something that meets the setbacks, then, you know, that's for them to figure out.
Or they can go to the loading boards. So we have uh the shape of a resolution. With, with conditions.
Yep.
Um. Would someone? Uh. Like to make a motion to approve? Or that was, that resolution with those conditions?
To grant, yeah, to grant conditional approval.
Were you gonna read them before?
Yeah, I can read, yeah, you can read. So, uh, first one, the applicant must pay all outstanding escrow consultant fees to the local spring as may be. As may be required in connection with the application. Two, the applicant must pay a fee in lieu of an acceptable recreation site as set forth in the village's master fee schedule. Three, the applicant must place a note on the plat and report a declaration to the county clerk stating that parcel B. Uh, must incorporate the stormwater measures, which um, we'll get the exact language of what those measures are, but uh. That'll be, Will will confirm those.
Yeah.
Um, four, the applicant must place a note on the plat and report a declaration with the county clerk stating that parcel B must conform to the requirements. Of section one thirty dash five J of the code. And five, compliance with any outstanding technical comments raised by the village engineer.
Okay, right. Well, I'll make a motion to adopt the resolution, uh.
Conditionally improve.
Conditionally improve the uh, with the, the subdivision application, yep.
And that's for the uh plat dated September twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
The one at five thirty.
Yes. All right.
Uh, can I get a second? Anyone like to second that conditional approval?
Oh, second.
On favor?
I'd say I'm in favor.
I, I, I'm gonna say no.
Um, why did you like to elaborate?
Uh, I'm just struggling at the moment, it's not that it's, I don't think this is an impossible subdivision, I think that. In terms of the, the status of where the street is with the village, with the infrastructure. With what we understand about the layout as a plot, with what it's gonna become in the future. I'm, I'm, I, I'm a property investor and I think I, I know a little bit about this and I'm, I, I'm struggling to see what it's gonna look like.
So it's, it sounds like maybe a couple of board members want to consider the, the feedback we've heard tonight a little bit more and maybe uh how to, how to mitigate that.
I think it's a time issue, okay.
Yeah, um, um, um. I mean, I. Uh, there's, I guess, four, we've. Uh, heard from four uh homeowners on the block and. It really, three of them, I, I really feel. That they've had, they've gone through a lot. And, you know, and I don't know what we owe them. Um, versus uh the owner of this uh. Of this lot, uh, it is a very wooded lot, you know, and it. Doesn't look like, uh, it doesn't look like a building site, it looks like a, like a forest. And um. There, there, I, I mean, I, I was over there this afternoon and I'm going, oh, those are some big trees. And some of them are gonna have to go, cause there's just no other place to put a house.
Um, well, we can definitely hold the um, the public hearing open, um, another session.
Yeah.
I think I, what I would encourage.
We could also maybe go into, well, I guess, yeah, we could hold it open, but we could also go into attorney. If any specific questions of what, what we're supposed to be focusing on, right? As opposed to what.
We definitely could do that.
It is, but I'm, I'm, I'm open to holding it open and it, it, because it sounds like Ben and, and.
Well, I think, one thing that's important for the, for the board members to consider is. Um. What, what is, uh, what gets us to? Uh, yes, on a legally allowed proposal. Think that's, that's um a thing we do owe any applicant, um, or if they come.
Uh, you're, you're saying that.
They request the thing that is, that is allowed.
Okay, okay.
By the code, what?
Okay.
How, how can we shape, like, how can we give feedback?
That he's, he's, he's taking care of what he had to.
I don't disagree, but, but the applicant has bought. A property with intention of subdividing it, which I think is a very clever move, I think business-wise, what you've done is a very clever thing. But bought into a private road in a village, it's a very tricky position. If this is a village road, then it'd be much more straightforward, it's a fully private road. Up in Philstown somewhere up in the Highlands, that'd be a different situation again, but, but we're, we're in a, we're in a. In a very ambiguous situation that I don't fully understand and I, and I, I think the responsibility is. To the, the um, the, the neighbors, the residents of that street. As to like, you know, how their quality of life is gonna be affected and what's it gonna look like and. I, I think, I think legally, I think, you know, if it was just legal, I'd be like, yeah. Because we, we actually tick the boxes, but I think as a planning board, we can, we can look at that, you know, a slightly broader. View of this and, and, and see how is, how is this really gonna infa- i- impact the quality of life in the village.
A hundred percent, and I think the, the function of the planning board is to look at. Uh, a variety of lea- legal options and give guidance to applicants about which are acceptable, right? And I think that's, that is what we owe uh, for an applicant. Um, is guidance about what, what makes this. Uh, acceptable to us, what are the things that are, that are gonna be, that are important to be reflected here in the proposal?
I'd love to know, you know, I'd love to know. That, that's really what it comes down to, you know, like I, obviously I purchased the property. Um, I appreciate it, it was, I thought it was, it was a pretty good move, um. But, you know, it, like you said, it's an investment, I have a five-year-old to take care of, I got, you know, I have money invested that I need to take out eventually. Um, so whatever hoops I have to jump through, I'll jump through them, just let me know what they are.
And I, I think it's important to remember too, that, you know, the board does have discretion um with a lot of aspects of the application, but that. Discretion only extends so far and if an applicant meets the requirements set forth in the code, then, you know, they're. Entitled to. Have a subdivision approved and it's, you know, up to the board whether those requirements have been met or whether they can be met with. Conditions and it sounds like maybe some of the board members ought to look at that a little bit more.
Yeah, no, you're right, and I mean, he's, he's met. He's met the requirements uh. To be subdivided, right? I mean, that's, that's your feeling, right?
Well, with the conditions that.
Yeah, yeah, right, right.
Like, like, like in order, in order to.
In, in hope.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, like, we, we required a waiver of the, of updating the street and it required a waiver of. Um, the recreational, uh, you know, development.
Right, for, for you, for your points and if you have any concerns, there, there were waivers required, so there is. Reason, if you really feel like they shouldn't be granted, that's a reason why it could be rejected. I mean, if we wanna leave it open and discuss it, I don't wanna force through something because you and I wanted it, two people didn't want it, so I mean, we, if they need more time. Perfectly happy.
No, but I mean, he's. He's met the requirements to have the property subdivided. And the fact that it's a burden on the people on the street, this is. They're, they're not. Unfortunately, it sounds like they're really not part of the decision.
They are through us, we, we have to represent. So we get, the, you know, the, the, the bolts on the street. That, that don't live on the street, who are part of the village, we represent the village government, we represent. You know, we're, we're here to try and balance all these things, because there is. Um, you know, the, there's a path that applicant, by application like this could have taken. That said, you know, you gotta update the street, you gotta put in a park. Uh, and that, that's what it is, and if you wanna do it, like, that's what's required and we don't have to entertain anything more than that.
Yeah, and unfortunately, the progress is going to happen and, you know, you guys are there so to make sure it's done right. And I feel like I've met those standards, at least I hope so, so if there's anything else, I will do whatever you, whatever needs to happen, you know?
I, I'm willing to switch.
We, we can, we can, I don't wanna put, I don't want anyone to feel um undue pressure here, we can take.
No, I mean, he's, he's, we've asked him over months to, you know, address stormwater. We've asked him to, um, you know, a, a lot of different things. Uh, especially the stormwater, because, I mean, that's a, from what I understand, a really big problem with water coming down the hill. And uh, and the city is, the, the village, the village has, has calculated what needs to be done. To make that not impact the, the neighbors. So the, the real, um, I mean. A house with a couple with, you know, two point four people in it. Isn't going to add that much more, once the house is built, once it settles out. That's not going to be a major addition to the traffic on the street. The, during construction, obviously is, uh, but you, on the other hand, we. That is a fixed time, um, and, and anybody can have a house, you know. Built next to them, uh, and they have element to their, to what their, their control is and. We can't, uh, it sounds like we can't do any imposing on people to. To, you know, fix the street as they're going. And uh, that. The inability to do that does not seem like it's sufficient to stop.
We need new resolution.
What?
Well, is it, is, cause it, do we have to make another?
Yeah, if the, the board feels like they want to vote tonight, um, someone could make a, another motion or. If you think you need more time to, to get comfortable and make sure that, you know, everything is complied with, then. You can take more time to think about that too.
Um, I'm fine.
Would you like to make, to make the motion?
Uh, yeah, uh. What am I doing?
Uh, a motion to conditionally approve the cycling application.
Uh, make a motion to. Uh, make a motion to conditionally approve the cycling. For, for amendments to succeed.
Is there a second?
Well, uh.
I will, I will approve.
I.
Hi.
No.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's.
John.
I did, yeah, so I've been investing probably around the corner.
Where can we work?
Oh, yeah.
Do we need to read the entirety of the resolution to the record?
No, so as, um, what the board can do next is, um, or as part of that can, uh, authorize me to prepare a resolution, um, memorializing, uh, what was discussed tonight and what you voted on, and authorize the chairman to sign that resolution. Do we have a, a motion for that?
I will make a motion for what I just said. For the chairman to, uh, review the resolution and, and, uh, submit it.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
I'll say I.
All right, so, um, we'll finalize that resolution and the chairman can sign that, and then once the conditions that are in the resolution have been satisfied, then the chairman can sign the actual plat and it can be filed.
Uh, great, thank you, everyone, for, for the information, for the feedback. Um, I hope, uh, the public who was here saw that it's a hard job to balance all of these things, and we're really trying to do our best to balance the rights of property owners, the rights of villagers, the rights of neighbors and residents, and the future of the village. Uh, and, uh, you know, we're trying to do our best for you, so.
And I, I, I would like to add, I, I do feel bad about the, it, the, the, the road disrepair and the construction. I just think that, that the way that this board is set up, that it's not, it's, it's, I mean, we can make a recommendation to somebody eventually to see if there's a way to, to, uh, address.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think this is something that is currently on the top of mind of, of, of the village, um, so, um, but I think, uh, as everyone here, you're villager, you should, you should weigh in with, uh, the village office and let them know how you feel.
We've been down that road.
Yeah, um, but, but yeah, any information that, that they, they can have about, um, you know, for, uh, including people on, on the board, you know, we, we, we are citizens of, uh, we're villagers as well, and, um, um, and we should, um, you know, feel, feel comfortable letting the, the village board know, you know, uh, uh, how we feel about those, those kinds of situations.
So, so could I ask a question? So you, I would then write a letter and address it to the village board. Who, who would, who would the, the most affected person to, uh, to address be? The mayor?
I think the mayor, yeah.
Okay.
They have a meeting next Wednesday. They have a public.
On the icon? Yeah, that's, that's been great. Everyone's invited, every Wednesday.
Wednesday, Wednesday, seven.
Wednesday, seven, yeah. All right, um, thank you, everyone. Um, we're gonna move on to our second public hearing. It is, it is late, um, but, yeah.
See you soon.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, so this is, uh, we're gonna start discussing the hearing for one forty-three, one forty-five Main Street.
Really quick before we start that, um, unrelated, uh, Abigail, do you have any chance I have a Wi-Fi password? Cause I have no service. I wanna make sure nobody's been trying to call me for the past, uh, two hours.
So if you use the VCS ED PWN, uh, yep.
Uh, yep, I think I, I, I didn't need it actually. I must have connected.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yes, you, you know, um, I'm gonna say something for later business that I might wanna get, but let's, let's finish this up and then.
Okay, um, so, um, uh, can I get a motion to open the public hearing for, um, the application of change of use for one forty-three, one forty-five Main Street? Um, from, uh, office to commercial?
I'll make a motion to open the.
Public hearing?
Public hearing for one.
Forty.
One, one forty-three to one forty-five Main Street.
Yeah.
From office to commercial.
Yeah.
I will second that.
On favor?
All right.
All right, all right. Um, I'll quickly read the, um, uh, the notice into the record. Uh, the planning board will consider an application by Yan Min Cao, uh, the owner of IQV LLC at one forty-three, one forty-five Main Street, unit number two, Cold Spring New York, one oh five one six, subject property designated four eight dot eight dash six dash four oh on tax map is Good Life Wellness Spa, Inc., uh, at one forty-three, one forty-five Main Street. The business, uh, district B one, as well as the village's historic district. The applicant proposes a change from office to personal space, uh, personal service, requiring second review for change of use and parking table of village law. Uh, planning board will consider all, uh, verbal and or written comments from all persons interested in the proposed application in various matters described above. The planning board will also consider further relief as it finds necessary. Okay, um, has the notice been timely published in the official newspaper? Great. Um, has the applicant provided proof of mailing to affected parties? Um, have we received, uh, any comment by the public in writing or, or not mail or person? Okay. Um, and, uh, I don't think we've made a secret determination for this application.
Uh, no, it's, uh, gonna be a type-two action, but, uh, someone must make motion to formally, uh, view it as a type-two action. You can certainly do that.
That type-two action is, uh, it's, uh, it's, uh, the one that's not as.
Right, no further secret.
No, no further, yeah. Basically, it's like, it doesn't, doesn't trigger an additional environmental review.
Okay, right.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, most changes of uses are, are type two. Uh, would you like to make a motion to designate this?
I'll make a motion to designate this type-two.
Secret. Okay.
I'll say.
On favor?
Fine.
Uh, okay, um, we have the applicant here on Zoom. Um, hi there. Uh, would you like to describe, uh, for the record, uh, what you are proposing and walk us through, um, the, uh, what you have a presentation that you put together? Would you walk us through that? Are you muted?
Oh, you're muted, yeah.
I'm just, uh, the friend of the tenant, so I helped her to prepare the documents. And, uh, as I know, um, this is good house for the healthy, for the people healthy and, uh, like for the radiology, something like that, and, um, beauty bar. Um, because we saw there's no this business in this town, so, um, she thinks that this is a good idea to open business here, and we know, uh, Cold Spring is a very popular and hot travel site. Uh, lots will come to here for summer or even for, uh, the spring, autumn, um, so even maybe we will have, uh, hard time during the winter time, but still we think, um, it's a good, uh, opportunity to develop the business here.
Um, one, one second, I have a question for John.
Hmm.
Um, in terms of, uh, representation of the applicant, what, does it need to be like? I feel like we have an applicant that's not here. We have someone who is claiming to represent them.
Hmm.
What, is that acceptable from just, just to make sure that we are having a, a real hearing?
Sometimes, uh, in the application forms, there'll be like a proxy, uh, statement that, uh, the applicant signs and says, you know, the represent, representative can appear on their behalf. I don't know if we have that in, uh, our application packet.
Right.
Wow.
Abigail, do you have it to know if that, if there's anything like that in our, in the application packet?
I know the building, building application usually has something like that, and I wanna say zoning is more likely to be like more thoroughly that kind of stuff, but I don't think the planning board has a section.
Do you know if we have something from the property?
We have a name of Representative Yupan. That's you, right?
Yes.
Great, okay, it's here, so I think we're good.
Yeah.
Okay, just double checking. Um, all right, um, and, okay, so, so, uh, it's a health, uh, it's a health spa. You are excited about Cold Spring in particular because of the, the, um, uh, opportunity that you think is here, uh, for this site. You've provided the board, um, this, uh, presentation um, of, uh, it resembles a number of photos of things that we have asked for, um, and, uh, you know, I'll, I'll note, uh, that, uh, I appreciate the, um, the willingness to continue to work with us on, on providing the information that we needed. I think that, uh, this, unfortunately, like, this is not all the way to what I would hope an application would contain in terms of detail. Uh, but I think, um, from my perspective, uh, I'm, uh, willing to work with you on the current state um, in terms of, uh, understanding what the implications are, but I do have a number of, of, um, questions. I think just for expediency, I think we should go through page by page. I will, I'll do my best to narrate what is here. Um, and, uh, um, so, uh, our first, uh, our first page, um, is there a name of the business, by the way?
Yes.
What's the name?
Um, it's Wellness.
Good Life Wellness.
Good Life Wellness, okay.
Yes. I think on the presentation, the first page, uh, it has the name and the address.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, um, I see, on the second page, yep.
Yeah, and also on the signage, uh, we prepared that sign, um, only, only one sign. It's similar to the tea house, so.
Yeah, I, I noticed the, this edition of, of that sign there.
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the store name.
Right, and, uh, but the, but when we discussed before, um, you had mentioned only a sandwich board. So this is a, this is a new bit of signed proposal from what you initially proposed.
Yes, because we, um, yeah, but if you, if it, if it's too complicated, we can take off the signage only sandwich board, because this store is on the second floor. So that's why we think, uh, to put that signage, maybe it's more convenient for people to look at. And also, we worry about maybe in the winter time, and, uh, the sandwich board may be covered by the snow, not noticeable, so we, we think, and yeah, so.
Makes you feel better, the, the, the sidewalks are pretty well taken care of here. Um, so it shouldn't be covered by the snow.
You, you agree, right? I, I, that's, because I used to live in Ithaca, there's a lot of snow during the winter time.
Yeah, um, so a couple of details we need, we would need to know about the sign. What is the, what is the size of this, of the sign that would be hanging?
Well, the, um, I didn't, um, measure this sign, it's just as same as the one with the tea house. I took the picture of there, so I think that's a good idea.
Um, so this particular type of sign is actually, uh, prohibited.
Okay.
So you can't have, uh, any projecting signs which project any distance beyond or above the building and any direction other than over a street or sidewalk, and even those can only project up to one foot, so.
Okay.
You can't have any signs like this on the side.
All right, so we'll need to revise this to remove that sign.
Oh, okay, so you mean no good to put that sign?
Yeah, because it sticks out from the, from the, basically the local, local law says that, that it can't stick out more than a foot.
And only to the front?
Yeah, uh, because, um, do you know there's a tea house on the main street?
No, yeah, but it can only, it can extend out in the front, over the.
Over, over the sidewalk.
Yes, we, 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 we just, we can, we can move, uh, to the, to that location. Is that good?
Okay, but, but this is, this is, the sign is not, uh, you don't apply to us for the sign that goes to Historic Review Board.
Right, so, yeah, any sign larger than one square foot, which is presumably any sign, has to go to the HDR.
That's a whole separate, that's a whole separate process.
I think I sent you the application for the HDRB when you submitted.
Yes, yes, because I don't know exactly what's the size of the, this sign, so I didn't submit to them.
Right.
But I was wondering, um, if the change of the use approved the, this time, can we apply for the signage after that?
Uh, it, it, what you need to, you need to remove the sign from this, from this application, from this application.
Okay, okay.
We just need to remove that, that, that part of it.
Okay, okay, yeah, no problem.
As far as the, the window signs go, window signs can only cover up to, I think it's thirty percent of the glass in the window, so they can't cover the whole window pane.
Yeah. So, uh, did you understand that? The, 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 the signs in the window need to be like, probably about a half as big as the proposed here.
Half, half, okay, no problem.
So really, you know, the, the planning board can't approve the signs that are in the application right now, and, but the HDRB will be the one.
Okay.
Well, yeah, so probably, probably easiest to also remove the proposal of the signs in the windows from this.
Okay.
Yeah, because it says only thirty percent, right?
But if, if we remove, if we remove all the four, uh, window signs, uh, can we, um, just put the lights, say, open, close business hours?
That would be, uh, up to the HDRB, I think, whether.
There's another board that you're gonna have to deal with.
But it, but it, but I think those would meet our criteria. Like, it would, they would just have to additionally be approved by the, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I, I don't think you really have to approve any sign, you just can't approve what's been presented so far.
Yeah, so I'm not saying that we can't present non-compliant codes, non-compliant signs, but an opened and a closed that was compliant, in other words, it was small, uh, would be compliant, but you would additionally have to apply for approval from the Historic District Review Board.
Okay.
I think you're gonna have to go for them, to get, to get something close to what you're looking for.
I, I, it's not clear of the voice, sorry.
I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I was, I was just saying that I think, I think to achieve what you're wanting to achieve in terms of public presence, um, you're gonna need to go to Historic Review Board.
I need to get what?
To, you need to go to Historic Review Board. The HDRB. HDRB.
Uh, HDOB, okay.
But, um, I, I sent you the application for the COA, so the HDRB application, I sent you that already. So what you wanna do is just fill it out and just follow the instructions and send it back to me in email if you have any questions or if there's something that you need clarity on, just send it to me.
Um, yeah, but I want to, because the sign on the, the big sign, I said, um, I copied from the other store when I visited Cold Spring, I took picture. Do you have idea, maybe tell me what size is that sign?
So what I can, I'm not familiar with the sign, but the, last year, the village updated its sign codes, so that sign was probably approved under a, a previous version.
Yeah.
Oh, I see, okay.
This, um, she can't hear me, can someone tell her please, um, the.
Well, oh, do you have, do you have anybody like work for Cold Spring Commercial um? Like a signage vendor? You can refer to me, so I think he knows the rules about your village.
Yeah, I'm not aware of anyone like that, but if you submit an application to the HDRB, they'll definitely be able to tell you all the rules. What you can and can't have.
Okay, okay.
What about commerce? For the T show.
No, I mean, I mean that Eliza run representative for all the things.
The wine? Uh the um run by um. Uh L- Lagerfeld.
Well, I'm just. Yeah, it's helpful to see, and that might be something that we could put them if they if they wanna go to um find out. What is reasonable, where where they find signs that are appropriate.
Um.
Very tough.
Just to, just to keep things moving along. Um so on the the lighting you proposed here, one firstly. Thank you for taking feedback about the lighting. Unfortunately, the lighting you proposed here is um also not. Compliant with the code. Um for path lighting like this, for architectural path lighting. The code requires um lights to be uh downcast. In other words, they can't. They they can illuminate just the ground, but they can't cast light up into the air. So, oh um what what those lights look like, they basically have a have a cover to them, and they reflect light back down to the ground. So you can see where you're walking, but you're not projecting light uh up into the into space, up and up into the to the area.
Uh but I have, I have a sign on the sticker on the wall, it says parking inside.
No, it's not about parking, it's about lighting.
Yeah.
You're talking about the light.
You're just saying you want to illuminate the parking sign.
Yes.
Uh. So that that is not, that's not allowed uh under under the lighting um. The lighting requirement for the village code.
Oh, okay. Um do you have any suggestions for the lighting? Cause I saw. Um others stores on the main street, the maybe you said that they are. When they applied, it's already.
Well, the so the the path lighting that's allowed is basically, you think of it like, it's like what you have where the light. Is uh it's on the ground, uh but rather than being able to project up into space, it just reflected. Back down to the ground. So that the only, the only place where light exists when it's on is on the path, on the ground.
Okay, I maybe ask somebody.
Yeah.
Cause I'm not a professional for the lighting.
Yeah.
Or did you know other uh stores? How do they do um using the lighting in the night?
Well, yeah, I mean, no, we can't really, the planning board can't really go based off of other businesses. We can only. You know, advise applicants of what the code requires. Um. And I, you know, I I'm not sure that anybody really knows what other businesses have utilized the.
Yeah, I mean, this is a a relatively unique. Location also for the village. Most of our stores and on. Uh in uh on Main Street have frontage on Main Street, um so they don't require going around uh behind the building to enter. Um so you're in a relatively unique position there. So I'd one, one last thing on the on the lighting, just before before I head off to you. Um uh you should check with the um with the building owner to make sure. That the left side of the driveway that you proposed putting lighting on. That uh that is a part of the lot and you're entitled to do that. You wouldn't want, that may be part of the adjacent lot. Um and you may not be allowed to put lighting on the left-hand side of the of 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 the driveway. Um but I I think it it it's highly likely you can on the right side, so I think the right side's fine. Uh you should check with the landlord to make sure that that he owns all the way to the to the edge, otherwise it might be just better to to leave them out.
Okay.
There's just one other thing, I I'm not, I'm not comfortable with solar lights. Um I'd want them powered, um and I'm, I'd be fine with twelve volt. Um lighting, but um but we we need to have. We need, you need to be able to turn these lights on and off and not just rely on whether they're getting any any solar activity.
Okay.
Well, I mean, the um. Like the the gym owner, for example. That they, the gym use for what you named, that was, that was the business owner applying.
Right, but the lights, for example, are physical, they're. They're going to have to be, and they really need to be attached to the building, right? Because otherwise they're gonna get hit by cars. Uh she's gonna have to wire them. Uh. I I just, I don't understand why she is the. Why, why we're not hearing from the building owner? Whose job it is to condition uh a the building. For occupancy by a business on the second floor.
Not necessarily, if it's a triple net lease, then it's up to them.
Um, okay.
Okay, um so I think uh these are pretty substantial changes we're asking for here. Um and it's late. So I think there there's not really a chance of us getting through the hearing today. Uh without serious amendments to the proposal here. Um so I suggest we table this until next time.
Sure.
Unless folks have other critical feedback to give about uh changes or improvements to make in the meantime.
Could I make a comment? I mean, I just think that, you know, overall with the application, it's it for. The change of use for the business, which is a retail, it's it's very difficult to do something that you have to change. You know, your your entryway into the back of the building. And there's a lot of code in this town that you have to adhere to, which which. I think is the reason why there's not many of these that 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 currently are are in service because. It's not a decent thing to pass all the board's requirements, so just in light of that. It, you know, it's it's a difficult thing for us to pass without, you know, a pristine application for something. Of of this magnitude, so um just keep that in mind as you keep going through this process. I don't know if there's another way to find a more suitable location without having to do all of this, uh going through all of this. Um I mean, we're willing to, we're willing to hear, and if you adhere to everything, we're willing to pass it, but it just seems like there's a lot of things that you have to adhere to. That might be detrimental to the business that you're trying to run.
I'll I'll also say that I think um just maybe a slight tweak on the on the language you use, I I don't think. We're even asking for a pristine application here. I think um just for your own calibration, like. The, we're trying to get to something that's minimally acceptable, uh that is far, that is far from the standards that we often see here. Um so with that perspective, I thi- I would suggest. Um. Uh in order, in order to give us even a possibility of being resolved next, for the next here, for the next hearing in two weeks. That um you uh do everything you can to. Um you have additional people that might be able to help you um. Uh uh understand exactly what wouldn't, that you know, how to fulfill the requests. That we've made of you today to make the application stronger. Um what I'm worried about is that. Especially given the back and forth that we did over email just to get this far. That we've given you feedback tonight. And then we're gonna get back something that isn't quite there, and we're gonna be in the same boat next week, in two weeks. And I know you want to move this along forward, and we we wanna move it along forward for you, like we 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 are cheering for you here, like. We 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 love new businesses here in Cold Spring, we want that, there's just certain bars that we have to, we have to. Jump over in order to get there, and so I think um I would highly encourage you to engage additional help. To kind of help get this application all the way to where it needs to be. For us to seriously um like be able to actually evaluate it. Um and I know that we uh we s- we gave a conditional. Um uh uh agreement that the application was complete. I think um we're still just not quite there, uh we didn't meet the conditions, so um. Um please keep that in mind and and um let's let's try to come back in two weeks. With uh a really strong uh response to the feedback that you've given, that we've given you here. And uh maybe with getting some additional feedback from from other sources.
Okay, so um I think you. You mentioned to uh one is the lighting, one is the signage, right? Those uh parts needs to be approved.
They they need to be modified, so.
They need to be modified, yeah.
Yes.
Other things are okay, right?
Um.
So Jonathan, I mean. I'm I'm starting to have like more, more questions and answers here, and um. I guess I'm just wondering if we're, at what, at what point. Is there any way which in which by approving? But let's say if we 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 approve an application that wasn't a code. And there would be um an injury or or something. Um in the future that that the village would be liable.
I don't think so, and I think, you know, with every application, there's always an implicit condition that applicants have to comply with the the state building code. And the the village code.
Okay.
Yeah, I think that like part of what we're trying to build up here. Um a perspective I I take on it is, how would we know? If what what was done was not compliant with what we approved, right? Like if we said. Uh we approve without signage, without the the proposed signage, right? And then all of a sudden, there's signs in the windows, like, oh, we didn't approve that. And if it's really clear in the in the application and then approval that we didn't approve it, then we could say, hey, like. There was application, there was a structure of a presentation and an approval, and it didn't include the signing, and here's, and here you have signing. Um so I think a lot of it is like, is there enough detail in the application? Such that if it came back a different way, we would be able to say, hey, that's not what we approved.
Right, but same with, same with um, you know, path lighting, safety.
Yeah.
Lighting, et cetera, like is the. And is Greg Warner gonna have an opinion on this? I mean.
I mean, he, I think, you know, be for every commercial use, Greg has to issue a certificate of occupancy, and as part of that, you know, he. Walks through.
He's gonna walk through this.
Yeah, and make sure that everything's compliant.
Thank you, yeah, that answers it, thank you.
Okay, so um does anyone have anything besides the the signage and the lighting? Um that we think is.
Uh where can I find the the code code of the lighting and the signage?
Yeah, there's uh it's chapter eighty-one.
Uh signage I know is chapter one thirty-four, lighting, I don't know off the top of my head, it could be eighty-one.
I I referenced it.
Um uh is it possible, can email, so then I can find the vendor to. To design and to comply with those codes.
Yeah, it if if you just, um if you just contact a local licensed electrician who's licensed in Bundham County, they will know the code.
You you can get the code online, too. If you just search Village in Cold Spring Code, it'll come right up.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Um I think, you know, just uh. Uh in broad strokes, I think those are, those are any, like the the biggest thing, I think we. Uh the back of the lot has enough parking, I don't, I'm not worried about that um.
Lots of parking.
Yeah, I know, I know you do.
It's all gravel back.
It's all gravel back there. Um yeah, I don't know what the full, the full dimensions, uh it's like. Like fifty feet by fifty feet of gravel.
This uh fire department uh set an occupancy count. Um you know, with one staircase.
Yeah, that would be in the the state fire code, I don't know. Would it, you know, would it just buy some?
But no, I don't have a problem.
Yeah.
Um I think that's a part of Greg Warner's uh inspection.
Okay, um Paul, I appreciate your your uh, you know, willingness to work with us on this, and we'll see you in two weeks, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, and so we did notice uh for a public hearing today.
Yeah.
Um so we just need a motion to adjourn that to whatever uh the date is in two weeks.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn the public hearing. One forty-three to one forty-five Main Street.
To September twenty-sixth?
Twenty-sixth, yeah.
Wait, so you're gonna be doing another public hearing?
Well, we're just gonna continue.
It's gonna continue, so I mean, no new notices, no new publish, it's just, we'll just come back.
Yeah.
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 Um. Okay, guys, let's let's po- let's power through, we can, we can get to the end of this. Um.
Board business.
Board business, okay, so uh we just need to approve the resolution from the forty, from forty Main Street uh gym. A last, we didn't get to that last time, so we just need to make sure we do that.
Yeah, if you if you weren't at the meeting um where the board approved the D E A camp.
We got Hillary.
No, I was, oh, you, did three of you were here?
N- no. No, I was.
You were here.
You, me, and Hillary, right?
Oh, yeah, we're missing, we're missing three.
Okay, so it'll just have to uh.
Alright, alright, we'll have to, we'll have to table.
Well, hold on, I don't think, um when was this, when was this? Yeah, I was not at the last.
Yeah, yeah, alright, so we we only have two. Um I I'm sorry.
Aren't they able to start working on their place, or they have to wait for this to be signed?
Velvetir, did you say?
No.
So I think technically, like, like, I think technically uh uh they could, they could, the. Greg could could like refuse to issue them. Uh uh you know, let let, you know, let the renovation, you know, uh.
Right.
Be deemed complete, but um they practically. Speaking, we have, we have approved it, so like.
I guess where I'm going is, is what if Hillary is home next Monday? Could she sign it? Could you and I sign it and then she signs it?
I mean, the other way uh you could do too is um Kevin and Ben could review the minutes. And uh vote to approve the resolution based on what was voted.
We don't, we don't have minutes left, so.
We'll, we'll figure it out.
Alright, well, uh we'll leave it for next time.
Which I'm not more at, so.
Ben.
Playbook. So. No, I just, uh I'm not even sure what the what the what the correct process for this is, um but. But in a, in our first meeting or two, when we talked about processes and about about, you know, how do we, how do we um. Build a playbook essentially, like uh uh as we're developing our skills and our learning. Um so that we'd had checklists to streamline. Uh getting in a, to getting into um. Uh applications and then approving them more quickly, so that we could, we didn't have to reinvent wheeling time. Um what forty Main Street, I think the the big takeaway that I took from that, and by the way, I I would have voted for it. In 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 the um, in the, in the, in the public meeting. Um but uh just the one takeaway from that would be um, I I would, for anything that was. The similar and could involve um a situation where there, where there, where, where. Um folks would be exposed to, you know, potential like um, you know, life safety. I would ask that the. You know, the, the, I think the fire chief and the police chief, like, we we run the the project by them and 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 we get a blessing from them. For for those projects, I would just like to sort of note that. And then that, so that would have laid my my fears upfront, right? I would have, if we were quick to work through that, the applicant would have gone away.
Yeah.
In one meeting, we're circle back, said, I have letters from both of them, and they've both approved. The concept of this idea, and we would be good, so that's, that was, that was one thing. I now have another one. All of a sudden, and that is, you know, sixties. I now have another one, this is probably one, all of a sudden, and that is, you know, sixties piece of velvet here that I, it's, it's not. Uh, again, it's not that application necessarily, it's that I, I think that um, you know, as we deal with um. These very, these very ambiguous properties and, and uh community members. So, you know, residents in streets that are private roads within the village, which I didn't even know existed frankly until. Until like a month ago, um, maybe, maybe two or three months.
So around the corner from your house.
I don't know.
No, I agree, I knew that, I knew that there were ones that were outside of the village proper, but I was not aware that there were private, you know.
Village, so, yeah, so um, I, let, let's, let's figure a way that we can, we can to not be in this position again.
Sorry, what, I, what, what position specifically?
Well, well, in other words, I, I mean, as, I think as, as Cold Spring, you know, residents will stop, citizens will stop. But um, so, so I think um part of it may be, you know, just generally is as, as residents, residents. Like, you know, asking, asking the trustees of, you know, what can be done about, about incorporating these streets. Uh, but also having a process where we're not in, I just, I just felt like I'm in no man's land. Uh, I, I was about saying yes, yes to streets, but we, we don't necessarily have an obligation as. Uh, call, now, now I'm speaking as a, uh, as Cold Spring government, we don't have an obligation to maintain. We don't have an obligation to necessarily provide water or sewer tube, or maybe we do, but I, I don't understand.
I, 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 I'm sorry, just, just to add on to that. The reason that I checked with Jonathan about this particular application, it seems like we have to, we, we only have to address. You know, that we do address the concerns of, of the citizens, but the way that the application process seems like it works. If he's done everything that we've asked, but to me, this, this, this is a very fine line. Because it's not a village-run, you know, street, right? So that, that really makes it tough for us as a planning board to, to plan for a community that is their responsibility to maintain their roads. And we say that it's okay for this guy to go in and do something in there. But I think that there should be something that has some sort of um, you know, clarity for us. To be able to, to, to make these decisions that maybe we have some input about.
Yeah.
From, from, from this community as a whole in, in, in a different manner than we would in, on a, on a village street. You know, because I think that there, there should be some sort of say that these people have in that, in that community. Whereas right now, I don't think that that's part of the application process.
Well, I mean, I think that is what the public hearing.
But the public hearing is, is, is certain people that we get right before that, that, the, the process. And we haven't had, we haven't had the feedback um for our, our, you know, the applicant here. To give them that information until the very last minute, so we drag him through this, but if we, uh, just let me finish. If we, if we have that unique situation where it's a private road, where we, where, where we as a village don't have any responsibility to maintain it. I think that's a completely different animal and we should know that before this process, before we put him through the, make him jump through all these hoops. And then have people say, no, we don't like that, and this is, we have to maintain this road ourselves. It makes it very difficult for us to, to, to do that. I think that he did everything we asked of him and I felt like I had to approve it because he did everything that we asked all along the line. And that, that's what we, we wanted him to do, but I do think it's a unique situation where we have to have some clarity. And, and maybe even some more input from, from that community.
Which, so just as a, it, it's a thing we've not really utilized this year. Because for the most part, the applications have been relatively straightforward and we've been able to, for the most part, get to. Um, conclusions of public hearings in the same session that they've opened. That is not a requirement, and it is not, and, and like, and from my perspective, like, if uh, you know, the, the value of holding it open. Is to say, is, is in situations where like, you know, we want to give the public time to digest, time to respond, time to get more feedback. You actually watch uh some of the public hearings that the village board does, they might keep it open for like three or four weeks. They kept, they kept the public hearing open for the revision of the, of the code, open for what, like a month, two months?
Uh, yeah, maybe even more than.
It was open for like, yeah, it was, it was incredibly long period of time. Because we wanted to, we wanted to hear feedback, we wanted to incorporate the feedback, we wanted to make divisions, we wanted to hear feedback. Incorporated the feedback, like, and, and I think that like, it's, it's painful to do. In a situation where like, ah, you know, I feel like, uh, I don't know, I know, I don't know if I'm confident about my, my concerns. And I don't know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna put an imposition on the applicant. Um, but that's the, that is the function of keeping the hearing open, is to say, okay, we've heard from the public. We've, we've delivered information to the public in order for, in order to make this a, a robust exchange of information. And incorporation of changes, we should keep it open so that we can get additional feedback next time. Or that we, you know, people have a chance to digest what's, what's there. I think in this case, I'm, I don't feel as strongly about the, the need for that um in this particular case. But that is the function and, and like, I'm not the only opinion that matters, like if anyone else is like, no, we should, we, we should keep the hearing open. Like, I'm, unless I'm like, unless it's a really trivial thing, I'm probably gonna be like, yeah, let's keep the hearing open. Um.
I'm, I'm just concerned about the way that the process with timeline is that we make requests of an applicant.
Yeah.
Right, we do that for months.
Yeah.
Without, without even getting any feedback from some major concerns that might affect what, what this applicant is, is going through. Whether it's gonna be, you know, seen in a positive or negative light, we can't tell that until the very end. To me, that seems like a kind of backwards process. It seems to me like the process should be upfront, where we, it's almost like, we could do this and leave this open for a while. And have the public comment more towards the front of the, of the application. And then have the rest of the application filled in and leave these open so that we at least can get the concerns of what the people who are in that, in, in that.
Unfortunately, they were kinda limited by the law because we can only have a public hearing once there is a complete application. With the idea being that, you know, you don't wanna open it up to the public.
You don't wanna waste people's time, but something that is not, was not, not, not flushed out, right? Imagine, like, you know, like, if, for, for all the applications that we've had, we just like jumped into a public hearing the first day. Or the, or the next, the next hearing.
Right.
Or the, the next meeting that we had, like, it would have been a shit show, because like, we were, we've been, you know, we've been missing a lot of information. We would have been, we would have been trying to navigate real-time feedback, getting their reactions. It would be in this like highly, like, public and contended forum, because it's like, they feel like they're being watched and it's like, it's not, it's not pleasant. It would be pleasant for us, it would be pleasant for them to do ideation and revision in that forum. So I think we, there is a lot of value for the public and for us to get to like, what we think is like, our best guess is like, complete and good. Right?
Well, well, may, maybe it's then upon us at the beginning of the application process to say, if we can see that it might be a problem. To have the applicant make sure that he's talking to the people that might complain or might have some issues upfront. So that we know that if these come in, that it's a possibility that this might not go through. Because we see that there's, you know, this, this maybe is something that, that you might wanna be a little cautious about. You know, I, I don't, I don't know what, what our role is, but I feel like that the role of getting somebody, if we wanna have someone get the application to like the finish line.
Yeah.
And then, you know, I, I see what you're saying too.
We're talking like, I'm, I'm not gonna talk specifically about, about sixties of it. But, but it's, but it's normally a speculator and investor, they are gonna take some risk in, in getting an application. They have to cross, there are a lot of technical loops to get, jump through, as we know. Um, to make sure that a property is even gonna qualify and then if it qualifies that, you know, so I'm not, I, I hear what you're saying and, and I don't, I don't disagree with you. But, but I, I also get the point, you know. It, the, the application has to cross a threshold before it's even.
Right, that's true, yeah, yeah, it, it's not backwards, it's the right way to do it, but I just think that there should be some sort of.
You can, you can always ask, you can always ask, but, but they're also like, you know, they may just say, yeah, I talked to folks and everyone's super thrilled with it. And like, we won't know until we get.
Right, we won't know, but for them to know that there might be a problem, you know.
So holding it open seems interesting.
Yeah, well, I think it's, it is like, again, like especially if we're gonna just stop, holding it open is, but is the, is the um. Safer, nicer, more robust thing to do. Because uh, you're, you're giving everyone a chance to think about it, you're giving everyone, you're giving the public a chance to react to information. Um, I think, again, this one was kind of on the fence for me, like, we could have chosen to hold it open. Um, I don't personally think we would have learned a lot more. Yeah, basically, like, half the residents of East Velvetir in the room.
Right.
Uh, and uh, most of the complication of, of the application wasn't really, yeah, it wasn't in danger of changing, so.
Three of them, we had.
And we have Ray and.
One other one that was not here too.
Um, and I think part of what um kinda prolongs the process is, most of the applications are like these change of use and they're DIY applications. You know, if we were in the town of Poughkeepsie or somewhere, the room would be filled with engineers and lawyers. And they would come in, you know, with the, a complete application at the first meeting and, you know, comply with most of the, the comments. So I think.
Con, con, part of a consequence of no formula businesses, it's like, basically just have folks who are bootstrapping everything.
Right, and you know, you guys could tell every applicant that submits an application, you have to comply to a T. With the site plan requirements, meaning like professional drawings and lighting plans and landscaping plans. But you choose not to do that because it's not feasible for somebody that's trying to open, you know, to do a change of use application for a deli. So.
Yeah.
I think that's kind of why there's more of a, a, a.
Otherwise, you start. Setting a minimum on the, the type of business that can apply.
Yeah.
And you, you don't get as good of a mix.
Yeah.
Now, is, is there a way for us to have, you know, it, it might make sense to have this public, you know, meeting, have the public comments. And then for us to go into sort of like a different session, like if you leave it open where we don't have, you know, we're able to deliberate and discuss the merits of it. You know, in sort of like a private setting, as opposed to being.
Can't deliberate in a private setting.
Not, I mean, as part of a board meeting, like, as, as if we were in executive session or something, or.
Not in executive session, you can't, I mean, what you could do is you could.
When you, like, when you come out of, when you come out of the, of an executive session, you have to assert that nothing, nothing like pertinent to the.
Right, so all of it has to be done in, in a sort of sa- same exact form here, but that's why, that's why I think it's good to leave it open. Because then you could have this discussion that, you know, you could come back and think about what everybody said. And then maybe at the next meeting, then you, you, you'd be fully aware of, of other people's arguments. Instead of having to think of their arguments uh right there on the spot.
And what you can also do is you could, you can close the public comment and adjourn the meeting. So the public's not gonna comment anymore, the applicant's not gonna submit any new information. But you as board members still have time to digest and think about how you wanna solve it.
Right, that mean, do you agree that maybe like in something like this, it probably might have been best to hold it up because there was differing opinion? Even if, if Henry went in and came and said, I, I, I agree that we should have got it done, but if there's another one like this, maybe we should err on saying, let's, let's leave this open. Because it'll give everyone a little bit of time to, to think about.
Yeah, I want, I want everyone to feel that operate, that, that option intensely, because it is an important one. And it is one that will protect you from any other board member being like, no, this is, I feel strongly, like, well, let's go, right? And like, the part of the, part of the function of us as a board is that we have, we have different notions of what's sufficient. And what's, what's competent and what's information that needs to be there. And so I, I, I want everyone to feel that, that option is there, and I don't want, I know that like.
And, and I actually, I came plus, I, and, and I, I, I felt that I would have been comfortable if I said, let's hold it up.
Yeah.
Just, I'm curious if, of um. Uh, we only, there's only four of us this week, if next week, if we held it open and there was five of us or a different four.
Yes.
In two weeks, you know, what happens, who can participate?
Whoever's there for uh.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well.
I mean, if somebody wasn't there for a previous meeting, you know, they should ask the applicant to summarize again and ask the other board members to fill them in, so they're not.
But they could participate, so.
And if we only have three, you know, would, would it be, would it prove the board to say, if it's two versus one? And then at that point say, well, let's hold this open until we can get the list of the board here, you know, is that something that I think would kind of. That way one person isn't stopping an application.
What I was trying to get at is, I feel like, John, you can correct me if I'm, my, my instincts here are wrong, but I think that like, again, I'm fine with a denial. But I think a denial on any application has to come with a path to an approval. If it's a, if it's illegally allowed uh thing, and that like, again, like this, like, this, like, we can put, we can put. The shape of what's, what's an acceptable solution out there, but we can't, like, someone wants to put in a deli and like, we don't like delis. So like, I'm a vegan, I don't think, I don't think delis are good, so I'm just gonna, I'm, I know, I'm one of three and I'm gonna say no, no matter what, because I don't want the deli.
Right.
Right, like, I can't do that, right, and, and, and I mean, I can, and then I can get sued and then the deli happens anyway. Um, but I think that like, in, in, in that instance, I need to say, okay, look, you know, I don't really, I don't really like delis. Uh, but I think that uh, in order for this to fit into the community in the right way, it needs to have X and Y and D. And you haven't done that yet, so I'm gonna vote no.
Yeah, I think that's exactly right.
And with this other one too, when, when you pointed out, there were a couple of variances that we had to put in there that, that might not have been acceptable. And I could see why that would be too, you know, that this street for sure, you know, it's, it's something that, that, you know, that, the letter of the, the rule said that. They have to maintain that street, if, if you felt like, you know, the street was negatively affected, then, you know, is, is it, is, is it legal reason why you get rejected?
Right.
And just going back to your point, Kevin, um, sometimes you, there are scenarios where an applicant will come in and there's only three board members. And they pretty much know that they're not gonna get a unanimous vote of those three members. They'll request like as a courtesy to adjourn to the next meeting when there is a full board, so they get a better shot.
Right, okay, that, that's something that maybe they could be made aware of at those points.
You might want to delay.
Yes, so, wait, what happens if, where you can't get a, a unanimous vote on an adjournment? Like, what happens, you just like stay in session forever?
Well, I mean, the board could vote, uh, you know, it's really uh, it's like a courtesy that the.
Who wants to go to, wants to go to bed, it's like.
No, I mean, you could vote on the, the application.
Yeah.
You could say, sorry, we're not gonna adjourn this one more meeting, we're gonna vote tonight and pass the vote.
Yeah.
But in practice, you know, if a applicant requests, the board will pretty much always uh let them have that, cause nobody wants to be that one to vote.
All right, speaking of adjournments.
Yeah.
Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Move, uh, make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
On favor. All right, well done, everybody.
We live local, so it's not, it's so much of a, you know.
Where do you live though?
I live uh in Montgomery.
These are, these are great, I love the engagement guide. Everyone's learning.
I guess, so you near the city winery, definitely, you know, city winery. Cause there's a lot of traffic and.
No, the food is just terrible.